Ms. Healy.
Here.
Ms. Ededigun will also be here in about a half hour. Ms. Randall.
Here.
Ms. Sigmund.
Here.
And Dr. Warner is absent. Nobody's participating electronically. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Item 2.01, FY26, budget priorities.
Time.
Mr. Palmer.
It's time. So, the FabC has discussed this about a month ago. Some minor changes, but ultimately these kind of mirror we have in our FY25 budget priorities. I think staffing at FabC and agreement that, you know, we saw some work to do in those areas and not something we want to switch every year. These are some pretty high-level priorities that we want to continue to focus on. The one change we did make is item number four. It was just differentiated funding for the schools based on school population. We kind of added the word staffing in there in a few areas so that as we're differentiated funding, we can also look at differentiated staffing. Some of that's already built into our staffing standards, but I think it's kind of staying true to that and fulfilling the rest of our staffing standards, just putting a little bit of emphasis on that. The first three, though, however, are unchanged from FY25. So this is coming for, you know, FY25.
FY25.
Yeah, because now we're, yeah, we're in 25 now.
Oh, 2016.
Yeah.
It's so confusing. You mean, why I always have to...
We're always working on three or four different fiscal years all at the same time. So bringing this as a discussion for this time and then looking to approve at the next board meeting to see if we have any other changes to this or any other ideas.
And some of this, I have been meeting with principals this summer and, you know, while we do have Title I funds for elementary school, we don't have those funds for other schools.
Right.
And what I was hearing from some of the middle schools that have a large number of at-risk populations, that they're, they're not getting any consideration in terms of their staffing for that. And so I express some concern about that when we looked at where could we tweak to maybe bring that up. And that was, you know, the Fab is a whole discussion.
But this time, our differentiated staffing is centered around special education and ESOL students.
Correct.
Or any other...
Right now, right now, we assign staffing for ESOL and special ed based on the students in that school.
But I guess like for, you know, every 500 students will add like an AP or like we have those numbers as well.
Right.
But as far as supporting the individual populations, we only have those two standards currently, correct?
Correct. And now the school site funding is something that we've talked about for a couple of years and that would be differentiated and that would take into account not only the ESOL and special ed students, but also take into account like free-produced lunch, economically disadvantaged.
But we haven't implemented it.
We have not implemented it.
That has, nothing has happened with that at the moment.
We talked about it, everyone.
So, you know, no, it's funny you say that.
It's true.
Because I feel like when I look at this and I think this is great, but I'm, I feel like we are constantly out of place where we can't lift this up off the paper without it be, right? Without it being a complete battle. So I, I feel like we have to come up strategically with a way to actually make this have legs to walk out of... I get smarter on my birthday, just a second. I'm just kidding. Yeah. So, um, so I, so like regionally competitive compensation, I think, of course, that's a priority for us, but we've got to begin to really pick this up off the paper and I don't know how, I think we need to do that now versus continually fighting it in January, February, March, and on.
I understand that how the board of supervisors does their budget where each individual board supervisor will go with, I don't know if it's a team or whoever, but they, they talk about their own individual priorities and then they come together. So what I'm doing with my counterpart is I'm going to be in on that meeting with her so I can bring to the table what our needs are for the schools so that it can be sort of potentially baked into her budget already. And I think that maybe is a way that we can do stuff.
So tell me again, what do they do, Maya?
My, I have a very, like, my understanding, I don't want to be quoting, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I got the same information.
Very mild understanding that they meet, it's all, like, we would meet with him by ourselves individually for our budget and then they meet collectively and they hash out their budget. They also get their budget back with red lines and they tweak, but they do it individually and then they do it as a group. And then months later, they do it with ours. I want to be in on the planning process so that she knows, at least she can know what our needs are, she can see it, and in her beginning planning, we can be baked into her budget for, at least for Acquia. And then when we come, you know, hopefully we can get a little bit more, but I think if we can try to work with our counterparts that way, I think that's the only way that we could move forward. And honestly, it should have been like, that's how we should be doing it. And I agree.
I don't, yeah, I don't disagree at all. It's the...
So it took me asking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I get it. I get it.
How to get it on your budget meetings.
Not being asked, right? Right. Not being asked.
Yeah, we have to go to them and say...
I just think that it's, to me, it's, we can make priorities all day long, but you're right. I mean, that's part of it for me. I also feel like I could probably talk to them, look in the face and not get as far as you.
Okay.
Well, yeah. Well, then, I guess I will say, we'll talk, we'll talk.
Are you looking for comments?
Yes.
Um, I agree with all these that are here, but I wonder if we could tweak the headings on them so that they are more budget-related, like improved performance. And that's, that's a strategic plan goal, but when you look at this, it says, you know, to hire staffing, you know, needed to improve performance or just take some of that out to make it more of a, a budget.
Like compensation package.
Then a general theme.
That makes sense.
And one, I think attract and retain high-quality staff, that says, you know, that's compensation and benefits. There's no question there. That's how we're going to do it, at least the primary. And then even the, um, number four, the differentiated funding and staffing for schools based on the school population, I think that's, that's, that speaks, that's budget language. But to improve performance and to provide a safe and welcoming environment, those are more the outcomes than the, the budget. So is, and maybe that's something, I don't know, we, you know, we want to hash out, we want to ask Fab to, you know, to look at it. It's, it's not changing anything in here, but it's the, um...
The language.
The, the language that's going to be out there because if I'm looking at budget priorities, I'm thinking, okay, cost, how much is this? You know, and I add one, two, three, and four, and I see, you know, what the priority, what will cost to do what we, what we want to do. So, and I'm not saying we should put a dollar figure here, but I think we should, should, you know, give it a title that is more, you know, in line with the budget.
So, so, that actually would help a little bit with what I was just, what Maya was just saying as well in terms of having an art, a voice, being able to articulate something. But could you just say attract and retain quality staff by, you know, hiring whatever?
Well, I think, I'm not, I think that's, I think that already speaks.
I think that's, I think that's already four, are already four.
Right, but I'm asking like, if you just, all right, so I'll take the improved performance one, right?
Yeah.
Just have two performance by investing in or is like, is that what you're saying? Or just reward it all together?
Or I would, I would just, I would just take like here, you know, hire, you know, these staff to improve performance or for improved performance. I mean, because really the, the improved performance is not a budget priority. That is a program.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Goal, I would, I would think. Of course, it's been years since I was, you know, an analyst doing that stuff.
So we can invest in the programs, products, and people need to, like, the difference in staffing.
I like the word invest.
Improved performance, I guess.
Yeah.
Right.
And I like the way this has specific staffing.
Yes.
This isn't just hire more people.
Yes.
It's like hire psychologists, workers, counselor, you know, spec, you know, these kinds of people. So I don't, I don't know how, you know, you say...
So like targeting staffing standards or something like that?
And I don't know if we have it in here, but also professional development, right? That, that, you know, for example, the, the boot camp that, that they were doing in Stafford Middle School because they have so many brand-new teachers who don't know how to do classroom management. So professional development is definitely going to be something that would improve performance.
And then what we did for the Paris, that professional development.
Yeah. And the bus drivers.
It was, it was for, it was not for the licensed staff, but it absolutely would have an impact on improved performance. So it's, it's just, I don't know if we can, if there is a line we can come up with.
I do like using the word invest though because I think that's a, that's an actionable item where we could actually show...
Well, it costs and so is their budget.
The what?
It costs.
Yeah. And I whip invest in it, right?
Investment is costing and so...
So...
All of, all of these are investments, too.
Right.
But I'm just...
Right. But I think that one in particular because it's, there's so much that's incorporated into the actual piece.
But we can, we can take it back to the Fab and, and worst method and see what's...
And I think that that needs to, I don't...
Not to change the thought.
No, 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 no.
No, no, I can't, no, I can't, I'm, I'm...
Because that bullet is what's going to...
But the thought is right, right?
Yeah. Where does it sell the bullets?
Right.
Yeah.
And I think that's important to me. People see us have these, you know, big fun events and they're like, well, how much did that cost? Well, do you know what it would cost us not to do it, right? So...
Or, or as a former superintendent would say, what is the ROI? The return on investment.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, Spark was definitely a really worthwhile event.
But I, I mean, I certainly agree with, with everything here.
Yeah.
But to Maya's point, we're going to be selling this, not just to our counterparts, but to our constituents.
Right.
And our, our, our people that are going to support us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything else on this? Moving forward, FY26 to FY35 capital improvement program.
Oh, my gosh. So listen, the other big topic we're kicking off, so we've, we've talked about this a few times at FabC over the last several months, but then also we had a FabC meeting this morning. So started to preview, preview some of the updates that we have to this capital improvement plan, some kind of really encouraging updates. And obviously this is, I want to start by, this is just a, a draft that staff had started, had started to pull together. Something is not ready, like if y'all said, oh, let's approve this tonight, I know you're not going to say that. This is not ready for that, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
So this is truly a, to start the discussion. So don't look at it and say, say, Chris, why did you move this here? Like, I don't want to, I don't want you to think that we spent a lot of time ranking and re-ranking because that's really your job. We wanted to, we kind of grouped some projects together for discussion and that's where the rankings would get a little tweaked. But just know that we're not trying to make that decision for you. Truly brought this as a discussion item. So I didn't want you to get caught up in why this was here or that was there. And then we'll talk about some of the costs for some of the projects. I'm going to kind of let Jason go through it and talk about some of the updates.
All right. Great. Thanks, Chris. So just a quick overview of what we're going to talk about here, some of the key changes from last year. We're, we're going to talk and do a little bit of update on the elementary school costs that we've seen coming in, Drew Middle School costs and where we're at right now with that. I do, I do, well, the Rising Star cost in transportation, and we're going to talk a little bit about critical systems and where that's kind of fallen into all of this and then we'll kind of get to the school board prioritization. I do just want to say one thing that we see on our end. So we are requested by the board of supervisors to get across the street by October, a final CIP. And one of the, one of the challenges that we're having right now with this is the timeframes that we have to do planning and design and ultimately construction of many of our projects is very, very short and limited. And so a lot of the, the numbers and dynamics that you'll, that you'll see through this CIP process, and we saw this through the last one, there, we're getting a lot of live information and numbers that are having impacts into even some of, some of the budgets and cost projections that we have in this. So just be aware of that as we, as we move through this process. It's, it's dynamic and even as we get into Drew Middle School, you know, there's going to be dynamics that'll occur on that over the next six months that will have impacts on, you know, budgets and costs and numbers, things of that nature. So real quick, some key changes from last year. Alvin, well, the Bandy complex and our Stafford, those were really beyond the 10-year window so we took those out. I think there is a recognition by this board and everybody that those are on the horizon though that we need to keep a lookout for that.
And just quickly, Jason, is, some of these, just because we take them off our 10-years large capitalists, doesn't mean they don't make it into our CIP document as, hey, FYI, like thinking further ahead past 10 years, these are the things that we need to be considered.
Right.
Can I ask a real quick? When you say Alvin, Bandy replaced...
Central office here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But is there also a, when you say replacement, is there also a thought process to finding a site that is already in Stafford that you would renovate to make a new Bandy or are you more thinking new construction?
So right now, I would say we're not thinking it at all because that's so far ahead and we have 20 other projects that we're focusing on. Kind of to Jason's point from earlier of, we need to be planning 10 years in advance and not trying to plan like the year before, which is why, you know, things are constantly changing is, you know, we're trying to put numbers together in the CIP on a budget where we don't know what that design is, right? We don't know where it's going. A lot of places, you know, Principal, and they have land picked out for their next three or four elementary schools and they're already doing work on that land, preparing it so they can hit the ground running. We're not at that place right now. So, so no, we haven't really thought about it in a lot of detail. I think it's something that as we, as we move schools or rebuild and we, we look at that site at that time and say, hey, could this be repurposed for, for something else?
Okay.
Correct, yeah. So moving forward here, the, the high school bus access roads, this was an initiative that we looked at a few years ago to help with traffic circulation around the high schools. We'll talk about that and why we believe there's a better approach. The aquatic center and indoor activities was something that we didn't feel we were seeing much traction on and so that's been put to the side for now. But of course, the board can feel free to, you know, adjust any of these. And then last year, the Public Day School and Rising Star were shown as two separate projects. Moving forward, we're combining those into one complex likely to go on the Drew Middle School site, the current existing Drew Middle School site. And then as the board will discuss a little bit further tonight during, during the meeting, the, the bus parking is incorporated into Elementary School 18 at Stafford Plaza Bus Parking Facility because the bid cost came in very favorably on that. We are recommending to go ahead and move forward with that. And then of course, there are some construction cost updates that, you know, it's a live market out there. We've got a lot of numbers flying around, so those impact where we're at. And then you'll, you'll also recall that the board of supervisors asked us to take our, we had separate lists last year, separate priority lists, if you will, for kind of some of the newer initiatives and then some of the critical system initiatives and we also had the replacement initiatives and those were shown in separate lists. And they've asked us to put those all into one list, so that's what is reflected in front of you here tonight. It's all in one list, one place now. And that, that meant that we moved a few things around, including the paving projects, which moved back to that three R list. Okay. So those are a lot of, a lot of changes, but wanted to kind of give you a high-level overview and I do see one question.
The Public Day School combined with Rising Star and Stafford Plaza Bus Parking incorporated into ES 18, you said those are staying on, correct?
Yes, standing on.
Okay. It's a little bit confusing that the heading is project...
It's fair.
Unless you want to put color in the, you know, the little circles for those. But, but I, if, if this is going to be put out for the public or, or, you know, just future use, I think we should clarify, you know, like leaving the projects removed and then put projects, you know, added or, or not changed or something like that.
Or just key changes, yeah.
So, and then my question is, I, I think it's kind of on board, but that is, the Public Day School, when we switch Drew out, is still going to be in the Drew building?
It'll be in the old Drew. It'll be its own standalone on the site. Drew will be somewhere else.
Right. Drew Middle will be somewhere else. The building will stay as it is or will get a new place?
Well, that is to be determined.
Okay. And so we're still looking for a site for the Public Day School in the meantime while that occurs.
That's a separate conversation.
It's to be determined, I think, right now, which will...
With the board, it's their choice.
Right.
Okay.
They fund it.
Yep.
Right. So, and that's, that'll be to be determined. We need to, we need...
Well, I remember a conversation about trailers and Rising Star and all that other stuff, but I'm still a little bit confused about the Public Day School and I don't want to...
As we get along.
...the fact that where we have these students in that building.
I just assumed they were going with the Drew.
Drew, originally, that's what I thought too.
I guess, my mistake, but that's my...
For the term, but then that, I don't understand how we conceptualize that. Because you can't move them and then move them again and then, I mean, we're going to do it anyway, but...
If we want the population that we want in that school, we can't put a day school in there too.
So we do have a slide where we'll talk a little bit about this.
Yes, I do.
Why don't, if, if, if we can, let's, let's wait for that slide and then we can talk a little bit about it.
I just have a quick question. The Public Day School, don't we have another Public Day School at Stafford High School?
Instead of Stafford High School.
So, so when we talk about public trade school, we probably need to...
We would look at...
...to footnote or specify, you know, currently Drew or to include both Drew and the Stafford High School site. I'm just trying to make this easier for somebody...
Oh, for the parents of the Public Day, like, to be able to know what to park them about.
For somebody that is going to be looking at the slides to understand.
Right. Yeah, I see, because on here, it specifically says Drew.
Oh, Heather, I just use the whole name. I mean, that would provide more space at the high school also, right?
Right.
Okay. So moving forward on the elementary costs, we, some good news, right? Point of celebration here for everybody, hopefully tonight. Low bid of 44 million. That was without the bus parking in there, but just wanted to stop here for a minute and talk about, talk about what that means. The budgeted cost, you can see we were budgeting at 451 a square foot. That was right in line with the comparative projects we were seeing around the state and our professional cost estimators, which are saying 455 to 460 per square foot. The actual bid per square foot was 337 per square foot, which blew us away, in a good way. So we have kind of scratched our heads a little bit over the last couple of weeks, you know, is this something we're doing right or is something going on in the market? I think the answer is yes to both. I think we know what we're doing right in terms of the, the efficiencies with the design, the efficient methods that we've brought in terms of construction materials, giving longer timeframes for construction that allow those contractors to absorb less risk. So those are some things that we want to continue doing moving forward. As far as what changes are occurring in the market, we don't know. But it does seem that maybe this is coming back to us a little bit, hopefully, right? But we'll, we'll know obviously a little bit more here in a few weeks when Elementary School 19 bids come in. I'm going to tell you now, it's going to be hard for Elementary School 19 to beat the Elementary School 18 price because that was a very good price for a square foot out there.
So can I ask, when, was there just one bid that was way out of line with, that's what I was curious to...
All within, very tight, yeah. Very tight bids. They were all within a couple million dollars of each other.
Right.
So I think...
I don't want to, like, I, I want to draw a little bit more attention to this. I, I think we are doing something right, clearly, because this, or we also be closer to the 460 that comparison projects of just, like, within the last few months. So the construction market's coming down, but it hasn't come down that much in just a short period of time. So like a shout out, you know, to, to Jason and his team and the architects, we truly are like, we're building an efficient design is really what we believe in. Like Jason said, we're choosing construction materials that are cheaper to build, we're not adding some of the extra bells and whistles.
Correct.
Is it not going to be ugly?
No, no.
Well, we're very good and we...
No, Maya's got a lot of... Glass walls, we're...
Yeah. It'll look great. So, so want to take, you know, give them some credit there that, that we are doing something right, but we also realize that maybe the market's coming down a little bit. So some of the numbers on your sheet are in red because we're still waiting to finalize. Even 18, as we tweak some of our other numbers in 18, obviously it's down significantly. But 19, let's see what happens with 19. Are we seeing the same trend there? And then, you know, the, some of the trouble we're having with, with Drew is Drew, we're going to be bidding that, that's still over a year out before we bid the Drew project. So what's going to happen in the construction market between now and then? Obviously, we're still going to be pursuing a design that is very cost-efficient and easy to build will be our goal, but how does that compare to the other middle school builds? And we, Fredericksburg just had a middle school site that, that we're kind of basing our budget per square foot on, similar to what Fredericksburg's square footage and what their cost per square footage for their middle school is. But are we going to do better than that and then what does it look like in a year, right? So that's where there's just a lot up in the air and construction market, just the last few years has been very up in it.
So can I just ask, is there, I can, I know we're not in the, we haven't done the design thing, but is there a thought consideration to keeping Drew Middle School replacement at a two-story versus a three-story so we don't have to go through this CUP crap?
Yes, absolutely. But, but we'll still have a comprehensive plan and compliance review, which is really a higher hurdle to clear.
And honestly, I'd love to see a price side by side. If we have to do it at two stories, this is what it will cost more because we're going wider and lower versus three stories, which is more Lego's going straight up.
I thought three story was usually better for cost in.
It is, but if we have to go to a two-story to pass the CUP process or something like that, what are we actually looking at spending?
So that's what that holds up right now?
I wouldn't read too much into trying to meet the CUP process. I don't think that was really a, that's a process we go through on, on a lot of projects and it's never a concern. I think it was just...
That was political.
Yeah, I think we should still do the, that, like, we should still go with what we were thinking, not changing because of that.
Oh, I'm not changing. I just want people to know, if it doesn't pass, this is how much more it will cost us.
So we can definitely make sure that happens.
That's, that's what I'm interested in. If we cannot get a three-story school through the process, our backup plan is a two-story school and it will cost as much. And take away field space or what we lose in the footprint as well or parking or whatever that looks like. Ms. Healy?
So Chris, our design cost is traditionally based on the cost of the construction.
Since the construction is so much less than we had anticipated, does that mean our design
cost is going to go down?
No, Jason corrected me, but, no, go ahead.
Yeah, so we've already, in terms of the design contracts for the elementary schools specifically, those have already been negotiated and we, we did get a lot of cost benefit from doing the prototype approach, right? So this, the design of 19 and subsequent ones, I think it saves like a million dollars almost per, per subsequent design. Not a million dollars each, more each time, but like, I think the first one was like 3.5 or 3.7 and then it goes down to like 2.5 or...
But, I mean, traditionally, they would say, and I, I don't know if this is the right number, but it was approximately 10% of the cost of construction was the cost of design. So if the construction goes from 50,000 to 40,000, you know, I guess because we've already negotiated, it can't go down, but I think the next negotiation we do, we ought to take that into consideration because it's, you know, they, they should take the benefit along with the, you know, the devil ball.
So we, one of the things, we don't, that's just more of a good rule of thumb, but they're not typically trying to take, what do we think it's going to construct for and then back their design numbers into it, right? So they're, at least that's not how we're going to review their, their bids. We're going to review their bids and their cost based on what we actually believe man-hours, billable man-hours it's going to take for them to design. The percentage is going to be whatever it's going to be. Historically, yes, eight to 10% is, is a historical norm. What we've seen over the last five, six years is that percentage as a total percentage is much lower, so like five.
Because construction costs have gone up so much, the percentage of...
So the market corrected itself on that.
Yeah, on the design piece, yes.
I was just curious because back in the day, it used to be pretty much flat percentage of, of the cost and we didn't negotiate the design ahead of, you know, doing anything else.
And there are still some groups out there that like that approach. We don't. We try to...
Not when it saves us money.
Yeah.
So talking a little bit about the Drew Middle School replacement costs, so we, right now, we are projecting that the cost is going to increase. The approved budget last year was 96 million. Right now, you'll see on there, we're projecting somewhere between 115 to 120 million. And there's a couple of big drivers for that. One, we're a smaller piece of this, but the cost of land is going to impact this to a degree. We'll, we'll talk a little bit about that a little bit more in closed session tonight. But really the two big...
And just to clarify that, because last year, we were assuming a swap with Rising Star so there was no land budgeted in that middle school replacement and now we're happy to do as a standalone project.
Correct. And as part of that, looking at other sites, some of the ones we've talked about have had some significant off-site costs attributed with them. And more specifically, what we've been seeing from VDOT over the past year has been a, a lot of big asks and we're not expecting that to go away. We're expecting that to continue to be their position moving forward with these schools, that there's going to be a lot of requests for off-site improvements to the road systems and so forth around the schools. So we've, you know, in turn adjusted our cost estimates for, you know, what we're anticipating there.
Can I ask a dumb question? I'm sorry, VDOT does not, does VDOT not control our roads? There, as I understand them, they're not county-run roads, so is that not a VDOT expense? It does a VDOT application?
Don't they have to split it with us if...
Yeah.
No, so the way...
So how does that work?
If we're making improvements, they put, they don't approve those site plans until we agree to do those improvements to the roads. So, and, and these are above and...
But those are their roads though, right?
Right. So they have, they have authority over certain, requesting certain improvements. So if we're making impacts to local roads, they have the authority to request certain improvements, just like they would for a typical development process.
Okay.
Saying, hey, you're, you're impacting these off-site intersections and whatnot, so you need to go improve those intersections or...
Or they'll say you can't, you can't have an exit from your subdivision onto this road.
Right. So...
A good example that would be when Mountain View was built, I believe they required us to put the traffic signal in at Cheltenham Road, which is in Courthouse. It's like, the Mountain View, Mountain View, like, that Cheltenham, you think, wait, that's way down the road, but yet we had to, you know, we had to get these minutes and we had to pay that. Yeah, I mean, that's not close in my view, but that was a requirement and we as a school system had to pay for that.
That's insane. All right.
And, and similar like so for High School 6. They're, they're making us do improvements out on 17 at that intersection, not because we need it, but because of potential future development that we could be creating because of putting a school... because of putting a school or the road access there. And that's costing seven million and that's already in our budget, so it's not like we just drove us over. But that's just an example of some of the areas that we would never have expected in the past and, and now they're starting to pull us in and say, no, you have to do this as part of that. Maybe it's because they're restricted on funding and they want to go ahead and get these taken care of and so they know that we'll do it because it's part of our project. It's how we.
I bet you that's what they, they can make us pay for it, why would they pay for it?
But they also. But it's also kind of frustrating, because, I mean, if they're VDOT, these are Virginia's, they have to know, we don't generate our own money.
And they, they try to look at it and, and, I mean, I guess to their credit, right? They're trying to look at it very black and white in terms of, how would we view this as? If this were a, a home developer out here, what would we require of them? But I will say that they've taken a very particular interest in the school ones lately from a, a safety standpoint. And I think that they also see it as an opportunity to have the board of supervisors, another opportunity to request the board of supervisors to invest more money into the local roads.
Well, unless they don't, like, a division does not have to.
And I guess I see them reverse as well, right? Like, I see, these are your roads, VDOT, and our infrastructure is terrible, so where were you before? That's just the bottom line. So I, it might be a simple view, I don't, I don't necessarily know, but it's frustrating that we're coming up across all this.
It is, yeah.
I don't, I'm not even saying that the requirements are wrong or bad. What I'm saying is, is that if you want control of these roads and the maintenance of these roads, then there should be a financial impact of burden on yourselves as the owner of these roads. That seems to make the most sense to me. But I'm going to put sense aside, I, I might save it for Rising Star, because I see it's on the back, so go ahead.
So just finishing up, the other, the other kind of thing that, or a, a big, big issue that's driving the cost right now on Drew is the, the total square footage. So last year we had estimated and budgeted for about a hundred and forty-seven thousand square foot. That was based off very just preliminary numbers of what we thought might be needed. We have since then had a programming study done that has estimated a hundred and sixty thousand square foot. It's about an eight, eight point eight percent increase in the square footage that is in line with what the, the city is currently doing with their eleven-hundred student middle school. So we're, we're cognizant of that and we're trying to make sure we're budgeting accordingly. Ultimately, and I don't want to get too hung up on the square footage increase, because over the next, we're currently seeking architects and engineers for this project. Ultimately, that's going to be worked out over the next three to six months as we go through true planning studies.
When you say worked out, it would be worked out on your end, but what, I don't want us to miss the window of being included, because that almost happened before, so I don't want that to happen.
Yeah, no, right, yeah. So right now, the, we're anticipating having an architect hopefully onboard in the November timeframe.
Right.
And again, this goes back to what I was saying earlier, is we're, because we have these condensed planning and design schedules, we're, we're really kind of doing planning and design concurrently. And in this sense now, even with Drew, almost budgeting concurrently with planning and design, because everything is so compressed. Normally those are elongated by another two years, let's say. So we have a little more time to absorb and make adjustments. But that's just, again, part of the dynamic that we're in right now in this, in this division where we have immediate needs that we need to quickly address, right? So I do, again, would encourage everybody to be involved over the next few months as we go through that process, absolutely. And then the other, other piece of this is.
Can we put that on the FAV agenda to, like, even get a monthly update on where we are? Like, every two months of where we are, just so that if there's a conversation that needs to come full board, at least it's come through that first.
Right. And then the other, other part of this is we, the VDOE data in terms of school costs and even the industry experts are still estimating at those higher cost per square foot numbers. So we're tying ourselves to that for now, but, you know, perhaps we may get a little bold, more bold here after we see nineteen. We don't know, right? So we'll see where things, things land here over the next few months.
So we're kind of planning for worst case on the cost per square foot and VDOT requirements for off-site improvements, because we don't want to be a year from now and then coming back and saying, oh, we need twenty million dollars because VDOT wants us to do this, that.
When will we know the cost for elementary school nineteen? When is the bidding closing?
Twenty months, twenty years, twenty three.
So pretty soon.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so just, yeah, quickly, the, we anticipate between the savings from eighteen and nineteen that we're pretty much going to be able to offset some of these increases for Drew and maybe still have a little bit to play with, we'll, we'll see. But, so I don't think we're going to have to go and ask for additional money to the board of supervisors. We're just going to ask to shift from one project to another, those savings.
So what's the cost of the parking at elementary school?
One point nine.
One point nine? So of the savings, we plan to use almost two million dollars of it for parking?
So the, the, right, right now, the roughly ten million in savings that we're estimating is, is, I want to say this.
Includes the expectation that we're spending the money on the bus parking.
Right.
So it would go from ten to twelve if we didn't do the bus parking.
But that's what it does for approval, correct?
Yeah. Correct.
Not yet.
Okay.
So, so, wait, wait, I'm, I'm just a little confused. So this, this, your, your handout or whatever is telling us that the bid for elementary school eighteen is forty-four million, approximately. But on this CIP draft, you have it as sixty-five, nine.
That's the whole loaded budget for, for the, the land, the design, the furniture, everything.
Okay.
IP equipment.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not completely clear, I don't know what.
Right, so, so what we need to do is say, construction bid, right? That's what this was for the construction bid? And then, and then maybe put, no, this is not include the cost of, you know, these other, these other factors.
Land.
So that's, that would, somebody would say.
Because I'm sitting here, I could, I mean, I'm sitting here going, oh, it's forty-four, but here you say it's sixty-seven.
So the ten million dollars savings and the twenty million dollars.
So there was a twenty-two million dollar savings, but it's not a twenty-two million dollars. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're clear.
And without bus parking is a little potentially confusing for someone that doesn't understand that's not the bus parking for the school buses going to that school. This is a, you know, larger bus parking for, you know, many other, you know, buses as well. So we just, we just need to.
No.
Well, how do they go from, how do they go from five million to seven million to two million for the bus parking?
Make it more clear before we publish.
Is it a different thing?
Great question.
Well, originally, you know, we were looking at it as a separate project.
Right.
But when you lump it in with the project and you have more competitive bids and they're looking at it and now they're already in there doing the project, the land has been leveled, it's just cleaner and easier and they're being competitively bid against others, so it drove the price down.
Well, well, so just, just to, just to, well, to, to clarify.
I mean, if I want, get one for a two.
Honestly, you're not going to find, you're not going to be able to build a lot cheaper than that price.
Well, you have to clarify just a little bit more, that seven million was an escalated price for a twenty-twenty-eight delivery, so two years later.
Okay.
Including the.
Oh, so it's like an add-on project.
It was.
And.
Correct, as a separate project and escalated throughout future years.
And the board will recall that, that the, that the elementary school, the base, the base bids include the, the inf, the base infrastructure, if you will, for the future development of that.
Right.
So delivering a lot of the grading and so forth, that makes a hundred percent sense to do when you're doing the mass grading efforts and, and so.
They already had to move the dirt to go ahead and flatten the entire property together.
There's about two and a half million in costs that are being essentially absorbed by eighteen in that base bid.
To do that grading.
Generally, we're paying for the extra asphalt and the labor to lay it.
And the building, the small building, the electricity run out there.
So you're saying that this parking was also supposed to be for twenty-eight? And now you're saying if approved, would be for twenty-six?
Right, it would open, it'd be all part of the same project.
All part of the object, okay.
Yes. Correct.
And you did mention this morning, what was it, one, just one hundred buses?
Eighty.
Eighty buses there and then?
About a hundred parked.
Hundred parked.
Hundred parked.
So we have approximately, we have over three hundred buses, so it's eighty of three hundred would be stored there.
Right.
With the hundred staff.
And this is so that it's all done, open on the same time? And we're not looking at starting a school and then eight months later trying to build a parking lot, right?
Or two years later trying to build a parking lot.
Well, yeah. For ten years, don't fight me, I'm just saying.
Well, we are going to be building a parking lot later for the rest of the buses, at some point.
At some point, right.
And that's just that.
I think it's a penny, like, a foolish decision at that point, right?
Eighty lucky ones will get a parking lot.
That's coming on the next slide.
Yeah.
The slide after.
So discussion about Rising Star and the day school. So again, we've, we've done a very base level programming study. Again, I don't want to oversell what a programming study is at this point, although we, we did pay some, some, some money to have that done, right? But it, it really is, is telling us that we needed a little bit more square footage than what we were originally thinking for, for Rising Star. But we were also able to then incorporate the day school and take a look at those two projects together as one and gain some real cost efficiencies, so.
Can I ask, is this day school considered a elementary, middle and high school day school? Are we consolidating? Because when we were just saying to free up space even at Stafford High School, are we thought that way?
So yes, I think that's in our, in our heads where we like to be, but we haven't gotten to that level of detail yet.
Okay, I just don't know where in the programming.
Right, so right now, this is higher level programming space, generally this many classrooms for these many students.
How many students compared to the students in Heather Elementary?
I think we are adding approximately, was it four, four classrooms?
Four classrooms.
And then additional two for the Stafford High School.
Rising Star. So this was my question, really, to Rising Star, is only an additional two hundred and twelve seats, which doesn't feel like a lot, given the increase in burden on that early childhood population that we're servicing and seeing? So I, I just, on the main sheet over here, it says seats added, Rising Star and Day School, but two hundred and twelve. I mean, I'm starting to look at numbers, like, two hundred and twelve doesn't sound like a lot now, right? Like, it only sounds like a few.
Well, compared to the large percentage, like, what is the percentage of our total students that we have?
And I get that we have it done. Right, so how many students are we looking, is that across, both of these?
I think they have about twenty classrooms right now at Rising Star and they hold, it's, you know, they do two a day, so it's a little bit different depending on the program.
How their AM PM?
Their AM and PM, and so that's two hundred and twelve, we can actually serve more than that because of the AM, PM element of it, yeah.
I forgot how many students.
Why don't hit start with all day?
Yeah.
Well, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. But is that inclusive of the day school students then, that number?
That two twelve, I don't think is actually inclusive of the day school right now, because, yeah, because we're still trying to nail down such.
That's just Rising Star's.
Okay.
Oh, what you would need. Well, we need to be specific when, when we, when we put those two together, they're two very different entities. So when we talk about the increase, we probably need to have two lines there, we, within the one spot.
Yeah.
But, you know, how many are being added to Rising Star and how many will be added to the day school?
The Rising Star versus neither, because. Especially because we're adding to the day school, it's not our budget.
Right.
It's the ability to add, but they could not fund students to go to.
Right, well, but, and then, then we get to the question, are we, are we doing it so we can move them from Stafford High School? Not, not to answer here, but we're, we're, we're doing it for, for our benefit so that we can add additional space at the high school, you know, to, to, to be here.
Sure, which would be great.
But I, you know, just in terms of, of getting the full picture, it'd be helpful, and I think you raised the question, you know, how many students do we have now versus how many will we have under this proposal? So it's, it's, the information's here, we just need to have it more specific.
And, and I mean, I think when you talk two hundred and twelve, I, I think the other problem you have with the early childhood is if you're talking early childhood special ed, then you're talking classrooms of four to eight students. If you're talking BPI or Head Start, you could be talking about classrooms that could be as large as twenty-five or as small as twelve. And so this two twelve number, like, which population, are we talking about two hundred and twelve?
And we don't even know and that could change year to year.
Kind of like program capacity, design capacity and what's.
Yeah. But, but those, those designs are going to be pretty much standard because of the special nature of those classes. The, the Virginia preschool initiative, there's specific requirements, you know, the, the Head Start, the, the special ed ones. And it's so different, you know, when, when you say two hundred and twelve doesn't sound like much, well, if you only have like four in a classroom, that's a lot more than your traditional where you've got, you know, say twenty.
We'll go back to, we'll go back to the, the study that we had done and break that out a little bit better. Actually, I don't, I think that two twelve is probably a, a misnomer, we need to, we need to probably.
And, and to Rising Star, we're also, when we do that, we need to think about the Welcome Center and some of the other areas that we have down there, that entire Gary Meltzer's complex.
Yeah.
So it doesn't just talk about Rising Star replacing, because we still have to replace those areas. Because they're critical to welcoming, yes, and testing some of those new students that are coming into it.
Yeah. But it's part of Rising Star, I mean, it's.
Yeah, but they're.
Yes, no, they're kind of, the Welcome Center, it's on the Rising Star, kind of Gary Meltzer's complex, but Rising Star is more.
Who runs it though? We do, right?
We do, yes, but not.
Yeah, but not, not under Rising Star.
It's not a Rising Star.
It's not, it's not a preschool?
No.
So is it a general welcoming center?
Yes.
Well, then we, we need to rethink of whether we want that there as opposed to it being specialized for Rising Star and the day school. So but, I, you know, that's a long-term kind of thing, yes, just because it's there now, doesn't mean we have to put it in the rebuild. If there's, if there's a more effective and efficient place to, to move it, to house it.
Right.
Because, yeah, because your North Stafford people have to truck all the way down there too, so, for some.
So, one of the, one of the things, assuming now, as the picture's kind of clarified and forced a little bit more here on Rising Star and the day school, it looks like it would work well for us to align with the county's proposed, the county's proposed opening date for Rising Star of twenty thirty. Because assuming now that we're going to move to that Drew site, right? That, that clearly moves in that direction and Drew would, in theory, close in twenty twenty-eight and we would be able to begin construction on that campus. Now, there's still some question as to whether or not we would continue to host the day school at that campus versus moving the day school to another campus temporarily or how we would look at that. Again, those are details that we'll get into at a later date. But again, the twenty thirty date now seems to align fairly well. And then this does, of course, beg the question, and, and one of the things we saw in the CIP this year was, we still had an addition plan for North Star in our last year's CIP and it was, I believe, about twenty classrooms. And we've now added eight classrooms with the modulators. It's very nice space, I must say, that they kind of accidentally reset the bar on ourselves a little bit for the modulars, but it's, it's great space, very nice. And depending how we end up developing out the Rising Star campus, if you will, we may look at pushing that North Star addition outside of the ten-year window or at least towards the very end of it. But it does kind of muddy the water there a little bit, because we're going to look to increase capacity at Rising Star. We want to be careful though, because of the driving distance and so forth.
Transportation.
Because the kids are north.
It's going down there now. I mean, that's the problem, we, you have a.
Yeah, my kids went to Rising Star.
But, but twenty thirty, can I just go back to twenty thirty for a second?
Yeah.
Just in terms of, so I understand how you're seeing it aligned in terms of how it works, but that, that building is also a little bit at critical mass as well, right? So between now and twenty thirty, it's like, oh, it's, you know, six years, but like.
Twenty-eight, we're done.
So I need not to have a backup plan for that building should a critical failure happen there. Because I'm not sure that, we saw a couple of them last year, but I'm just, so twenty thirty sounds, all right, that doesn't feel bad when I'm looking at twenty twenty-eight on the startup calendar, but I'm at twenty twenty-four. So I've got this many years in the middle, so I don't want to lose sight of the Rising Star building and the shape it's in.
And keep in mind, we're also probably looking at the earliest we could open that school at this point is twenty twenty-nine by the time we go through the entire design process.
Right.
So at that point, let's line it up and we'll start, we'll have the design ready to go and start the construction as soon as Drew Middle School students move out.
Right.
And then we can have access to that property. And so that's what we were thinking with the twenty thirty. Each year we go now, push back the earliest we could do one, you know, so we had twenty twenty-eight previously for those schools, but that's, we're a year later now, so we're not going to be able to meet the twenty twenty-eight deadline without some major rush and increased costs to, to the construction.
It's still concerns with that, we have a, we have a failing that we have.
I agree a hundred percent, yeah.
We have more than worth it.
Well, I know, but I, I know.
But the reality is now is the earliest we can even get is twenty twenty-nine.
Okay.
You're right, you're right, there's a risk.
I mean, Hartwood did that tip there too.
Yes, yes, just on the record, that's all.
Okay, talking about transportation now for a moment. I mentioned earlier that we were suggesting to remove the high school bus access road, it's really what we need to do. And we've already started conversations with the county about off-site road improvements around some of the, some of the high school sites, in particular Stafford High School, Mountain View, and more recently, we've had discussions about Front Point.[1772.11] So those are projects that we are trying to work through with county transportation capital construction to scope out and get into their CIP. So we're, we're removing it from our CIP in one sense, but we're asking them, hey, this is really where it needs to be in your CIP over here, because it's really a transportation improvement around the school.
One of the things that Dr. Chase even asked for this morning, I think is a really good idea, though, is for us to get a spreadsheet to see, you know, they're naming added places of where to put buses, including High School Six, Elementary School Eighteen, bus parking, but we want to see the number of buses that we have in our fleet, and the number of spaces they plan to give for buses at these sites, plus the High School Six potentially, or ES Eighteen potentially, and the employee parking, because that's also a problem.
In addition to what we already have at North.
Right.
So that would be.
And we do that, and I'll, I can share it out this Friday, we actually have a list of all of our buses now and where they're parked at, and it's like twenty-six different locations spread out all over the county. It might be more than that, actually, when you include.
But if we're looking at opening, but, but if you're asking us to also consider a fleet service facility and have parking there,
Yes, we do that too.
what was that supposed to look like? So just knowing how many buses we have, and, and accounting for growth as well, because we always are, you know, I, I don't want to say we're going to open a fleet service that, and I'm grossly exaggerating numbers, that can house three hundred buses, well, wait a minute, we just put in all these parking pads and other places, so.
Right, but the fleet services is really too for maintenance and.
Transportational fleet service, yeah.
So it should essentially almost be its own entity building, right? Right. Like, like, not a bus parking lot, but building, right?
Building, but parking, yeah, yeah.
Like, it shouldn't be a bus parking lot, it should be a place where the buses can come, I mean, sure that they would need to park some buses there, but I would think this joint county schools, and I'm, I know why we aren't going to take this off our plane, give it solely over to them, because we probably have the larger fleet, but at the end of the day, like, I, this always stresses me out that this is on our bill it, when it's, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's true.
We're relying so heavily on their money and funding, and we have this additional ask, which looks so huge, but really, we're splitting the bill, but it only looks like we're the primary burden on the cost, does that make sense?
Right, so, and I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind here is as the school division grows, we're going to end up, like, historically, we could accommodate fleet services in that central, some of that central bus parking at the same facility. But as we continue to grow, that's not going to be possible, because fleet services needs the room to bring in and park buses that are broken down that need to be repaired, and so that's part of the reason recently.
Without buses trying to get in and out of there to go to school.
Correct. That's part of the reason we pulled those buses over to Stafford High School recently, was to open up some of that space.
Correct.
So the idea, though, with centralized bus parking is to take and, and create, you know, say, four to five to six, depending, you know, central bus parking locations that are going to be dispersed regionally throughout the county that can then be for bus parking, in that we're not having to move the buses for a high school event, or for an elementary or middle school event, right? And that we can also reliably make sure that we understand what's happening to those buses, keep, in terms of security, right?
I'm just going to say cameras focus on our buses.
And then with, with, with an attendant that can, you know, understand when buses are coming in, when they're going, if drivers aren't showing up, that we're not running into operational issues, and buses not getting out on other routes. So this is really, the district is maturing in this way, right? And we need to start thinking about having those to state standalone facilities.
So that they're not on twenty-six locations.
They're not entangled with all the other day-to-day operations of, of a school site, or a fleet services site, right?
Yeah.
Where are white vehicles parked? Would they be factored into?
Like, white, like, maintenance or bus.
Like, I know that sometimes we have to take a white car to transport a child, or we go pick up somebody from wherever, like, a bus breaks down, and we've got the kids covered, but, you know, I know we have these white.
Transportation has a handful that are just in their staff parking down there in front of transportation.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about where they're living?
So that's really what this is looking at, and, and again, with, with the potential opportunity to get that, um, bus parking there as part of Elementary School Eighteen, we think that could have a big impact, but ultimately, still looking at some, some parking lots. We've kind of targeted Colonial Forge and Mountain View as being potential places where we could co-locate some central bus parking.
So are they on here?
They are, they are about halfway down.
The additional bus parking.
Additional bus parking.
Right.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
They're all different numbers, they're all, and there's ten in there.
You know, it might be helpful since the costs are so different, if we say how many spots we need to, for, 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 for space.
Yeah, and.
I assume it's related, the cost is related to the amount of parking, the amount of buses we can.
Well, I should point out that the Colonial Forge actually also includes some fueling, a fuel, a fueling station in there, so we should probably clarify that.
Yeah, you clarify it on here, just not on here.
Where's our, where, where do we currently have fueling stations?
One at Park Ridge, and one at, sorry, I see, and one at our fleet transportation parking.
Okay, so continuing to move forward here, um, North Stafford, Fine Arts Wing. This was a question last year, it was initially something that staff recommended removing from the CIP, and ultimately, the board chose to place within the CIP. Since then, just wanted to talk about a few additional things that we believe is important to keep in mind. And we did invest one point four million into the auditorium sound and lighting upgrades there at North Stafford. So they, they do have a, a much nicer space to use, obviously still not, you know, brand new, at the same level of facility that we have at some of the other places. But also, too, with High School Six being that fine and performing arts specialty center, staff wanted to inquire again if the board still wishes to pursue these upgrades at North Stafford High School, or if it, if it's something that we feel that we're adequately covering now between the, some of the work that we've done there, and the specialty center now at High School Six.
I, I don't, I don't see that we adequately covered, we, we put Band-Aids on, you know, there, not being now to be on the stage because the lights were bothering, or made the sound a little better. And I appreciate what was done here, particularly since we had to do it in-house, we couldn't find a contractor to do it.
Yeah.
But, you know, this fine arts wing was put on there as a matter of period, because when we did additions at, you know, the other schools, you know, many of them focused on the fine arts, and North Stafford was left out. And this, this has been here for a long, long time, and I, my preference is to keep it there, to, to keep a reminder that this is something these kids are missing. The fine arts specialty center is great for the students that go there, but that's not going to help the two thousand-plus students that go to North.
Yeah, because it was more than just a stage, it was also their classrooms.
So I, I'm inclined to leave it there and try to fund it. And I'm surprised that the funding hasn't changed much over the ten years or so that we've been discussing this. And it's, it's interesting.
You know, that's, honestly, that's still in a conceptual phase now, that cost could go up as we get into more detail, and, and what that looks like for the fine arts.
Well, we, if we're going to put it on here, it ought to be pretty current in our projection.
So.
When we, when we go to the supervisor.
Or put it in red.
Do we have anywhere in the distant future a replacement aboard?
They took it off.
We took it off.
That was in the twenty forty-two-ish times.
I mean, it kind of hits the sixty-year mark, I think.
So can we get updated, can you guys just at some point take a look at the, the price for the North Stafford Fine Arts Wing? And just, just see if it changed at all in ten years, or?
Part of the issue that we're having there is, is with.
There's no clear picture.
There's no clear picture on what we're trying to accomplish, and I think.
Talk to Dr. Young. I think, seriously, she, she had the vision when she was on this board.
Well, talk to the staff.
They know, but they need. I have to come from the teachers.
I mean, I know she supports it, but.
Who are directly involved in it, but.
Doctor Warner supports it.
I have the same question as Chase. If we're rebuilding this school in twenty thirty, I'm not looking to approve, but if twenty forty-two is like a millennia away, that's a lot of high school classes that are missing some opportunities.
And I, and I get that the specialty center will have these things, but one of the things that we have also been assured of is that there will be opportunities for students who choose it not as a specialty, but just as their, their interest, that there would still be opportunities for them to pursue that. And I feel like the classroom, you know, there was a stage component, but there was an instrument storage and a classroom component that hasn't been addressed, so.
Those are communities that use it, the people, the groups in the community that come in and use the facility as well.
On the weekends and things, yeah.
And those, those numbers are, and, and to be clear, the, the eight point one, eight point two that we have on there is reflective of a scope, a scoping activity we did last year based on additional storage space and so forth.
Okay. Okay, so, okay. I just didn't know if we needed to change this number to red, because it's still considered conceptual, but.
Well, I think it would probably be wise at a certain point, if this is something that the board wish, does wish that we continue to pursue, that we, we need to go back and revisit this and have a clearer scoping study with, with staff and everything out there. But I just want to be aware that when we do that, we're spending, in some cases, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars doing scoping studies on these.
Well, the other thing is that, is there a way to make this a, 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 it could even be its own facility, I, you know, you do, we have separate facilities at Stafford High School, with, you know, one for their automotive and one for the ROTC. You know, if we, if we are doing a, a full thing for fine and performing arts, it's not something we would necessarily want to see bulldozed when we rebuild the school potentially, you know. Is, I'm not saying that's the way to do it, but I'm just saying, you know, is there a considerate way to do that? I don't know.
What are we going to do with the solar panels when we build?
Well, that's my question, my other question.
We are not rebuilding.
That's it, North Stafford is here.
Solar panel life span is lined, and that contract is lined up right about so when we would be rightfully rebuild North Stafford.
North Stafford's staying.
So you wouldn't be building solar.
Oh, I threw your sign.
Okay, so.
We looked at that one.
They'll be out.
I think, I think, though, that there's a consensus here, desire to continue forward.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Critical systems, and I want to try to keep, keep this moving here. So again, this was a, a big effort that we made last year to draw out some of those large critical system renovation projects out of the year-to-year three R list, and put them as large, large capital projects. We still think that that's important. Moving forward, we're trying to now balance those within the list of, you know, priorities here. So in terms of where we've placed these in the list, we have tried to elevate up, you know, in the attention Rodney Thompson and Gail Middle School concerns that we have at those, those are the top two on the critical systems replacement list. But just beware, right, that as we do this, and we begin looking at budgeting, in the case of Rodney Thompson, sixteen point five million, or Gail Middle School, twenty-four point nine million, that those are big dollars that are going to compete against, you know, replacement projects, or, you know, construction of Elementary School Twenty, or.
North Stafford, Fine Arts Wing.
Or Stafford's. Right, so those are some of the things that the board needs to weigh out in terms of prioritization.
Can I ask a really dumb question? So, is it known what we mean when we say critical system? Because I can see public, the board supervisors saying, we just gave you a bunch of money to fix Rodney Thompson, and now you need, you know, how much more?
Rodney Thompson wasn't even our most critical school, so that money, the additional money we got this year didn't go to Rodney Thompson last year.
So like, I just, like, I just want that to be very transparent, because critical systems just sounds like
So one of the.
Something that can be really anything.
Sounds like a boiling pipe bursting in a cafeteria.
We know this, but.
Yeah. No, no, what I'm saying, when everybody hears that, that's what they're now seeing, because there's a visual to that title, so it's much more provocative.
The people going for it. Right.
One of the things, one of the things we've struggled with, and I think this is a perception thing, most school divisions, school districts would call the type of work that we're doing, or suggesting to do at Rodney Thompson, Gail, a renovation. Okay, so it would be very typical if you went up to Principal on your Fairfax, they would just call it a renovation. I think, though, that in the, in the situation we're in, when we say renovation, people think HGTV, we're going in, we're making it look real nice and pretty, and that's, that's not what we're doing here, right? A renovation is very, you know, typical, we're going to go out, and we're going to gut a lot of the old systems, replace all of those critical systems, right, the HVAC, the water, and electrical, and fire alarm systems, all those different things. And then we come back through, you put a fresh coat of paint, new ceiling tiles, some new flooring, and that is the extent of the renovation that people think when they think of renovation.
So, I, I feel like, for me, it's a matter of, when I hear the word critical, I think imminent failure, and that's what, like, I'm like, why are we waiting? So, do you understand what I'm saying, like, you have critical systems, I know.
It's critical system, like HVAC, and plumbing.
Right, so, so I, just for clarification purposes, right? Because when I was looking at this originally, I was like, critical systems is that, you know, a boiler pipe, or whatever, but that's, what do we call that, like, like, the imminent, like, if I'm, if I'm afraid of something that's going to imminently fail, and I need to replace it tomorrow, that's different than a critical system, because that's what I'm using to keep the process moving, right?
Keep the building alive.
These are systems critical to running the building.
Right, yeah.
Right? So it doesn't mean they're in a critical status right now as far as need replacement.
Need to be done.
Now, a lot of them are.
Yes, well.
So it's, they are, yeah, it's critical, we replace these critical systems.
Correct. So the word is, right.
And, and so if, if it's, if we desire to kind of shift to the terminology of renovation, we can do that, but just be aware that what we're talking.
No, no, I just want to say that, like, when I was reading this first, because of what has gone on in the past,
It's not the.
Right.
It needs to be a lot.
It sounds like renovation is sort of discretionary.
I read critical systems as a different, like, I had a different visual in my head when I read critical systems, and then I was like, why are we waiting so long on a critical item? But now I see what you're saying.
Right.
Critical to the building.
It's the cri, it's not that it's critical that we replace it, it's a system that's critical to run the building, that needs the consistency of.
And to be clear, some of these systems are in critical.
Well, well, right, I know that, but, but that's not indicated here, that's on another list where we're, so,
Right, yeah, sure.
So that was just something I need a clarification on, because when I was looking at these, I, in my head, I interpreted it the wrong, a different way, so.
Right. Right. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Okay, so.
We were reading the timings critical versus the system.
System, correct.
Yes, yeah.
But if, if we're reading it that way, then maybe the public might, so the more clear we can be, the better
Sometimes.
It might be. Right. Yeah.
For our audience.
Right.
Which is ultimately the supervisors, too.
Right, so what we did do this year is we adjusted title to critical systems and renovation.
Yeah.
To try and capture that a little bit more.
So I appreciate that, and I, you know.
So if there's, but if there's a, a different approach, we're.
Well, if you want to pick back on the renovation.
Just clarify for the less quick people in the room.
I don't think the renovation gives the picture that we want to, to portray, because to me, renovation is more discretionary, or we're, we're.
I agree.
We're upgrading, we're making improvements.
I agree, renovation does sound discretionary.
That's why we don't.
We're doing basic maintenance.
I'm fine with critical systems, I think.
Yeah, no, I am too, I just wanted a clarification.
Yes, maintenance.
Maintenance projects.
So that's, again, why we've turned to critical systems and renovation, to try and capture the, the full picture. Because we, we want to be transparent.
Sometimes I get that point, too.
But what are we renovating? We're doing mostly fixing the systems.
So if we put, if we put out to capture this, I would just make sure that we add a sentence that says, system's critical to building function, instead of, right, because Trish is right, like, I, critical to me is time. System's critical, I'm just saying, communication to me is important for folks who look at stuff and maybe read it a little bit differently the first time around, so mindset-wise, because I don't want to see us being a boat either, where they're like, well, it says critical systems, but you put it on for twenty twenty-eight, how critical could it be, right?
Right.
So that's all I wanted to.
We could always get even more, you know, generic, say, you know, HVAC, and we could get very specific, right? With the, I mean, really, what, what ultimately needs to be done is each of these has a project description that details exactly what is.
This is a one-page summary of a forty-page document with a supporting pages to support the description for each one of these.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, wait, let's, I'm hyperlinked to what the description is, like, so what is this critical system? Oh, at Rodney, it's HVAC, at Gail, it might be plumbing, and.
Right.
Electrical, that's good.
But maybe we need to add the critical timing to this as well, because we're talking about the system, the critical systems that are going to be replaced. Does our target dates for replacement match the, our, our date that they really should be replaced? Or are we doing it because of something else? So that's, that's a really good point that you raise about, you know, when do, when do we need this?
Cut the swiss.
Yeah, the, the unfortunate, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to overgeneralize this, but the unfortunate situations that many of these are already overdue.
But we need to, we need to report that, then.
And we, and we, and we, and we do have the, the data to show that, and that is talked about in the descriptions. I just think that it's hard to capture it.
Everything on the one.
Right, so I think that if there are questions, we need, we need to encourage folks to, you know, we can answer those questions, but also to read the, the full descriptions and understand.
But that's part of the picture we're painting. These are critical systems that have critical timeframes for replacement, and if the timeframes are passed, then that's even more critical.
So. Right.
So, so you have, for example, for Thompson Middle School, critical systems and renovation, annual three R request. When did it first appear on the annual three R request to be done by? Right, that, and I don't know the answer to that, but all of these ones where you put.
Right, that, and I don't know the answer to that, but all of these ones where you put annual three R request, is it possible to be more informative and actually put the date at which it appeared on the three R, like when we wanted it done on the three R? Because I know there, like, the the three R, we just aren't getting it done, aren't gets, and things just get bumping year after year after year, so it.
It just keep going down in the list.
Right, so if it first appeared as needing to be done in two thousand five or two thousand fifteen, that would be more informative. But if that's too tough to, you know, I'm, that's just a thought.
No, it's a great thought because we've talked about doing the same thing because we need to draw attention to when these systems are actually scheduled to be due.
Right, yeah.
The, some of the challenge there is, is this isn't just one piece of equipment in a closet, this is equipment that's spread out through the building and when you do major. So one piece might have had a fifteen year replacement cycle, one might have had twenty five years, and now we're already at the twenty five years. So we need to do the fifteen year one and the twenty five year one. So it's not one singular date. And it's maybe a hundred different pieces of equipment that all have a different date ranging a period of time.
I don't know that we need to get ourselves that twisted. I think you could just put when the first thing was that has not gotten done. I mean, I just, like, we don't need to to worry so much about about that.
Or even have an attachment that is a summary of the historical, the history of each of these.
No, I agree with that.
Yeah. Right. All right, so I just want to point out that we have forty five minutes before our business meeting and we have two agenda items and closed session left.
Okay, so.
Oh, poor Jason, you have to end.
I know.
Sorry.
This is the second time doing this back today.
Hey, I'm sure you missed us, right, Jason? You have like a lot of time without us.
This is love, this is my favorite thing to do.
Yeah, I don't miss that.
Okay, well, the elementary school replacement, that's way down the road, so could we talk about that some other time?
It is. We absolutely can, I just would ask the board, consider whether or not, um, before our next meeting perhaps, whether or not these are replacements that we truly want to pursue or if we want to consider, and again, it's hard to believe in some of these renovations at some point in the outer ten year window.
Twelve years, right?
Ten, yeah.
Well, let's look at Ferry Farms, what do you think, Susan? That was a renovation.
But renovations, and then if we do them as renovations and we don't add seats, then we really need to pursue elementary school twenty one.
And I would say, I mean, my concern in response to that question is, for example, Ferry Farm, that's not where the birth is. The students aren't there, same thing with Grafton Village Elementary School. And so what we find when we suggest that students would go to that school, to these schools, people are like, I don't want to have to have my kids traveling. So I I wonder if, my my concern is just, we should put the school where the kids are.
Right.
So that's just my thought.
Well, that's a good, good talking point when we're talking about, are we gonna renovate, are we gonna, you know, rebuild?
Right, and if we're gonna rebuild, where would we, would we necessarily rebuild where the school is currently located?
And that's really the question I think we need to be considering as we talk through this. This is just kind of a catchall slide that we've got, we've got a
This one's impressive.
A very well thought through and detailed three R list here that Mr. Townsend has spent quite a bit of time on over the last couple of months. What I will say is that we have, we have tried to measure our requests. So for example, FY twenty six, we're saying we would like seventeen million in three R, okay? That's not to say that there's only seventeen million in needs, but we are trying to build that off of what the board gave us last year of fifteen or fourteen, maybe fif- about fifteen million. And then from there, we're trying to request each year about another two million. So we're we're asking that the board supervisors hold the baseline that they set last year and now let's bump it up a little bit and then each subsequent year, keep trying to tackle that so we can get to that twenty two, twenty five million per year. That is our approach, and we believe it's a good approach, a balanced approach, but.
And if we had that pay go fund thing, right, that's what would this would be? If we had that twenty million dollars in pay go fund.
Correct.
How many years left is that request?
It started when you guys got here.
Yeah.
All right, um, item two point zero three, elementary and high school redistricting process slash timeline.
You guys ready?
Oh, we are.
Are you?
As we swap out and Mr. Mr. White joins us.
He's gonna be our new best friend.
Yes.
Seeing a lot of Mr. White.
Here it comes.
That's why we haven't seen it at all from the last few months.
And I'm just giving everyone an FYI, he's moved into a different building, so if you would like. He did.
He's in the witness protection program. Can't find him anywhere.
And that wasn't on purpose at all.
So Lionel, very briefly, just talk a little bit, we don't probably have time to talk a whole lot about the process, you guys know that. We, some, put some of that in there just as for, kind of, as Ms. Healy points out, so if somebody picks us up and looks at it, they know what we're talking about with redistricting. And when we say naming of schools, that's the entire process of naming, school colors and mascots. Lump those together as one process or one policy that addresses that. So we want to talk high level, make sure we're all on the same page of what that timeline would be. You have two handouts that have a little bit more detail of what that timeline would be and then high level in this presentation. So Lionel, if we can, you can just talk very briefly and point out the slides that are more introductory at the beginning and jump more to the meat of the presentation.
Will do, so good evening esteemed school board members and student representatives. My name is Lionel White, I'm the director of planning. I'll lead tonight's presentation on school redistricting and the naming of new schools. Joining me tonight are Chris Fulmer, acting superintendent, and Jason Towery, executive director of facilities. I'm gonna make this quick, so. All right, so here's a very high level of those timelines for the opening of the three new schools.
And this is looking at, we were, high school six redistricting, starting this fall, actually at our next work session, that's in a couple of weeks. And then in January, uh, we would start the process of the naming for all three schools, kind of kicking off back committee. We would also be hiring or starting to advertise and appoint a principal. It wouldn't actually start until July one for high school six. And then, um, right now, and I think this is kind of some of the discussion, is whether elementary school eighteen and nineteen redistricting occurs next fall or we actually bring it forward a little bit to the spring and coincide with a little bit of the, I'll say that the downtime of the budget when we have a little bit of a lull. And then all of these schools open in twenty twenty six. So we want to do some of the redistricting ahead of the renaming so that we can include some of those students, especially at the high school level in that process, so they have a little bit of of input into that. And then if we have, and that helps with the naming, the colors, um, and the mascots. So that's not as important for eighteen and nineteen, but it still actually is included in our policy that we include the students in our elementary school, you know, colors and naming process as well. We could do that more generally, but.
The board doesn't do the colors and the mascot, we name the schools. Which is hard, which is hard enough, which is hard enough. There, that'll be up to the new principal, working with the community.
I like the, I, I mean, I like the expedited process, mostly for the families. But I think, you know, especially when it comes to eighteen and six, those families in particular are going to be like, all right, we know where one kid's going, now what about the other one?
Well, I mean, the people around outside have been waiting for high school for a long time, so.
I just would rather get it all done and get the information out.
Seventeen side.
For planning, for family planning purposes, for sure.
All right, all right, so for those of you watching at home not familiar with redistricting or naming processes, redistricting is a process of drawing your tenants' boundaries. This is necessary because we're opening three new schools, we need to fill those schools up. And at the same time, we need to alleviate crowding, so that's the reason why we're doing the redistricting. And some of the factors that we have to consider in the redistricting process, per our policy fourteen oh three, are these items or these considerations listed here on screen. I'm not gonna go into detail on any of these, but I just want to provide you with a list.
This becomes your checklist.
Oh, yeah, this is, these are some of the factors and considerations, of course. Each of these play a part in the drawing of redistricting scenarios and of course, they become important considerations for final boundaries. So depending which factors are put in play.
I mean, also, I think just as we move forward with this here, it's, I think we need to just keep restating that it is a full countywide redistrict, it's not just the high school six, elementary eighteen impact zones or nineteen, it's the whole county, like, everybody's going somewhere, right?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay, well, but not everybody.
Not every student.
Well, right, 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 but there will be stu- not everybody will get moved into an, if you're getting moved, that doesn't mean you're getting moved into the new school.
To a new school.
You may be getting moved into a different old school.
Old, right, right, or existing school, that's not old school, an existing school, yes.
Is it okay if I could ask a question about one of those, um, clauses there, um, for the socio-economic clause, is it kind of like, is that to encourage more like a diverse population or more like a cluster population based on the area that you live in?
Uh, the goal is, well, we want to look at diversity in terms of economic diversity. And so we'd like to have, if possible, you want to look at that to see there's some balance there.
So you don't end up with a school with ninety percent free and reduced versus one to ten percent? It's one of many factors.
Yes. All right, so in terms of the naming of new schools, uh, this policy is, uh, this is guided by mostly regulation eighty four oh three. And in that regulation, it sort of outlines the roles and responsibilities of the different stakeholders in the process. Uh, in terms of the naming committee, it is, it has a, it's comprised of a broad squad of stakeholders in the community. There's a school board member, parents, teachers, staff, community members, a lot of.
This is the first time we're gonna be employing this policy.
Oh, okay.
I think, I don't remember this on the last school.
Okay. So.
I under- I understand it was developed after.
Oh, okay, yeah, so.
Hopefully it'll make it better.
So the goal is that we're gonna have this inclusive process, right? And it involves all these stakeholders. All right, so here's some of the guidelines, particularly to naming new schools that are elementary and high schools. Per regulation eighty four oh three, these schools will be named for the street on which the school faces, the historic or current name of the district or community in which the district is located or after a Stafford County resident of historical significance.
Yeah, I should take that part out, not name school after person, because now everybody got receipts. I'm just saying. And I noticed that middle school is not listed there, so elementary and secondary?
There is a middle school section, we just left it out because it wasn't relevant to our discussion.
I was gonna be like, why do we have a policy that?
Middle school was different than elementary and high, so these two were the same policies, so that's fine. So now we're gonna jump into the high school six processes. Again, you can look at the flow, it goes from redistricting to naming to the school opening. And now I'll get into a little more detail here, here's a detailed timeline of high school number six. And of course, that process starts this month. And ultimately, it ends closer to December for the board because that's when, uh, school board deliberation occurs, December tenth. Just want to point out, there are three community engagement opportunities as well as a public hearing. So there's ample opportunities for us to get public and community feedback.
So can I ask that that community meeting number two, that's on Monday at six, get moved to a Tuesday at six? Maybe our second Thursday or our second Tuesday, yeah. Just because I can't make it and it's at Stafford High.
Okay.
Where is, where do you?
That's, is that the twenty?
We'll have to check the schedule, but if any day other than Monday or make it on Tuesday.
We'll double check all of these, I know we talked about that today.
If it was a different, if it was a different high school, it wouldn't be, but it's Stafford High.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do it.
So if the school's not available that day, we can change it to another day. I like the schools to think we're just saying, oh, well, make it available, depending on what's going on.
Yep.
All right, so now let's move on to the detailed naming timeline for high school six. Of course, that starts in January of twenty twenty five, you know, sort of immediately after the high school process. And that concludes in September of twenty twenty five. And you can see with the flow of the arrows how the process goes. And again, also with this process, there are ample opportunities for community engagement and committee. They're gonna be getting feedback from, you know, the committee, from the community and so forth. And so again, lots of engagement, lots of opportunity for this to be a transparent process.
So this is pretty much the committee until it comes to the board, right? I mean, so that's a good, that's a good thing.
Yes, and and I do want to point out, in September twenty twenty five, that's when the board will deliberate and choose the name, colors, mascot for the school.
Well, you mean the name and the colors and the mascot, is that in the policy? We have never done that before.
I believe that's in our new guidelines.
I really would like to leave that out of the school, I don't want to get into a mascot and colors and.
Well, well, I think they can end up with voting in both ways, so. When they let the public name the new battleship or whatever, they, without a lot of oversight.
But that's what traditionally, the principal would work on that. Isn't, isn't that what we used to do, Dr. Stone?
How many of us have been around?
I'm not, not selected.
Yeah.
Based on all colors.
It didn't come back to the board?
So that was a timeline, I don't think we had enough time to to go through.
I don't recall ever getting into mascot and colors as a school board member.
Traditionally, for twenty colonial fours, the boundaries were drawn first. The kids voted on several different options for the mascot and and colors.
I don't care about mascot and colors, but I agree with the name, like, we're in the same, like.
The school board at the time in Mountain Dew did not decide on the boundaries, so I didn't have that option, so I just, and they came, it was a timing thing. We need the colors today. And that's really driving part of this timeline right now, too, is, sure, we know the colors and everything, so we can.
Well, my preference as a school board member, because I don't have any, none of these schools are in in my district. I don't want to be in a position to tell somebody, these are your colors.
I do.
Well, but you've got the schools in your district, so.
Oh, that's right.
That's, I, you know, to me, that should be something that should be the school, within the school's control, meaning the principal in collaboration with the, you know, the the students, however they're represented on that and the and the public. Do we as a board, I mean, if y'all want to do it, I, you know, we can, but do we really want to be dictating the mascots?
I look at it as like we're approving, I look like it, we're approving, much like like the HR list. Do we go through it? Could we, like, I know other school divisions literally go into closed session and go line by line on the superintendent's recommended hire list or the hirings and firings and the relocations. And we don't do that, we approve it as part of the consent agenda, so I do see it as kind of like our endorsement of their decision and.
Why, why do we need to endorse their colors and their mascot?
I just, well, I think it's also.
It's a local, to me, that's a local decision. We can put that to governance if you want.
So it's currently in policy and reg. I think you're just endorsing the final product.
We haven't used it, we've never used it before.
I don't, I don't think it's a crazy idea to make sure.
I can tell you, naming a school for me has been the second hardest part of my job. Number one is redistricting, number two is naming a school. Of everything we do, naming a school is very traumatic. All right, we're on a time schedule, we gotta.
All right, so really quickly, um, moving on to the elementary eighteen and nineteen processes. This is high level, what that looks like starts in January twenty twenty five, and of course, they all end when the school is open in August of twenty twenty six. Again, this is.
Yeah, so, and so this is what's up for discussion. This was the initial thought over the last year as we were talking about when we would start the redistricting for eighteen and nineteen. What I would propose is actually pumping that forward to the spring of twenty twenty five and not waiting until the fall.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Whatever.
Yeah.
I'm good either way, spring.
As long as we're not meeting every single week.
Yeah, that's that's my concern, yeah.
That's, you know, let's, let's make this manageable.
Yeah.
So here's a detailed timeline of the elementary redistricting process and these dates will change. So I'll move on. The naming process remains the same because it's gonna run concurrent for elementary and the high school processes. And here's just the timeline recap of all processes.
We'll, we'll tweak, we'll get you new updated timeline sheets.
Because if you want to jump to the very last slide, it said, um.
Go all the way past the.
Last item, sensor structures at elementary schools.
So, um, Jason and I brought. So, um, Jason and I brought this to the Fab C for discussion, because this comes up, um, every year and for several years, and it's gonna come up again when we have our PTO, PTA meeting, next month or, or coming up soon, uh, on, on some of the budget priorities. And it's something that we would love to do, but it is not cheap. Some of the schools start to raise money, or the PTOs, PTA's raise money, and they want to do it on their own. And then it becomes an issue of one school having the funds to do it from a PTO, PTA standpoint and not another. We do not want cheap sunshades going up, that could become a safety issue. So, I know our, our first request is that they need to be of a commercial quality. And, and when you do that, and make them kind of the safest, uh, to, to put on a playground, or, or, and it's, and we're not even talking about a sunshade that's gonna cover an entire playground, it's more of a
Area.
twenty by thirty area. So the initial installation cost, and then on top of that, um, you have some maintenance on there, and that's really just, um, could we do this in-house? Yes, have our own maintenance staff go take them down. It's not just as easy as unscrewing a couple bolts, because you have to make sure tension, um, and, and folding up and storing it, so, um, you can, the average cost to maintain really is just a couple times a year of, of having somebody go from site to site, take them down, fold them up, uh, put them away, because it's not something you want to leave up over the winter time. And then what's the long-term impact?
Are they angled so that like snow, ice falls off of them, or does it stay on?
So, all, I mean, a lot of this came from me, all of the elementary schools in my division have the floor plan that has the interior courtyards. And, um, prin, oh, I've been approached by both principals, and I'm unfamiliar how many of our schools follow that, all of mine happen to. I've been approached both by PTOs and by principals, which is one of the reasons, like, each school, different people have reached out to me. Because it would make it easier to use their outdoor play space, um, if there were a sunshade. Particularly, I know in Anthony Burns, one of the spaces has, uh, is used for, um, special needs population to have outdoor recess in a confined space. But when it's a hundred degrees and there's no shade in an interior courtyard, it would make life easier. I know many of the, several of our elementary schools are starting to get the, uh, outdoor classroom installations donated by Dominion. Uh, Winy Creek has one, Rising Star has one, Anthony Burns has one, and those installations come with the posts there. They install the posts, and it is up to the school to provide the sunshades, which is where PTO has come in. They coordinated for the classroom, now they want to put up the sunshade. And I guess the frustration is, they didn't have to jump through any hoops, hoops to have the whole classroom installed, but they're hitting a wall when they come to what they see as the finishing piece, which is the sunshade. So.
So it looks to me, just based on total ten-year cost for nineteen elementary schools is ninety-three thousand. So basically, every elementary school.
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred, sorry, I'm just, yeah, every, every elementary school would need to be setting aside about, about five thousand dollars a year to pay for the eventual replacement of their sunshade.
If they, you know, if they decided they want it, when I understand some elementary schools have some natural shade that others don't.
So I guess my question is just, is it, is that something that principals would want to spend their site-based money on to make this happen?
Or would we as a school board come up with the money because it benefits the kids?
Right.
And it's not just, you know, out there for fun, it's all the things that they get out of the recess.
And the people I've talked to. Right, but they're giving up other things, right? I mean, there's nothing as like, I'll do this, right, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's this or that.
And the populations I've talked to, they've all wanted to use their own money to fund this. They're not coming, asking for money, they're asking for permission. In some cases, it's the PTO budget, in some cases, it's the site-based funding. You know, we've heard, you know, the reason that we give these, this money to principals is because they know what their schools need, and then they're trying to buy something to maximize, you know, their campus for student use. And they're unable to do it, so.
But you will have actual concerns about safety if it's not done appropriately, is that?
Right, so we would just want to make sure, um, that what you're doing is, is, is a commercial-grade sunshade, so something you would see maybe if you went down to one of the local parks. Because they have certain, um, design standards and everything that are accommodating that. So, um, not, if you will, the residential style that you would typically see, and that's, that's actually.
Somebody's backyard or something like that.
Right, so that's what, slight, slight difference, that's what Dominion has been, um, proposing. That's what they've kind of set up for. I think there is a risk associated, it's probably fairly small, right, that something could come up in the shade, come down and hurt somebody, you know, but.
Probably get kids break their bones on equipment that we have, too.
Right, but as soon as, so, but, but the other part is just the, the maintenance, making sure that, you know, we can't really have trouble.
Would we not have some kind of potential contract with the PTO? That if this, if they, PTO wants to install it, then they would be responsible for, you know, the maintenance. And that if they were not able to take care of the maintenance, then it would be removed.
Okay, well, this is my first question. Is there a policy that the board would have, um, voted on? Because I, I was, I remember hearing the rumors that you guys were gonna do it, but I don't know if you did it. Where PTOs or the residents, that the parents of a school can only put forth so much percentage of a project. Did that ever get adjudicated with you?
I don't remember that.
It would have been for the Moncur, because like, I know, we paid like twenty-five thousand dollars to, to, to help Moncur have the basketball court. But then we got redistricted and we never used it. And so then I remember people talking, I remember my own, um, school board member, uh, speaking about potentially having a policy where parents can only fund certain dollar amounts, because it's really, really bad if you fund something, but on a grand scale, and then you don't, your kid doesn't, doesn't get to use it. And so I was just wondering, was there even a, did that policy ever even go through?
I don't, I don't remember, I don't remember, but, you know, that, that's an interesting point you bring up, because are the PTOs doing it for their kids? Are they doing it for the school, and the students are gonna be at the school? Because if they're doing it for the school, then, you know, the, the, the structure stays with the school even if the kids move. I know that was a really big, but there was a lot of other.
No, I, I, I get that, but let's just say you guys say, okay, well, the schools that can, I mean, if we're gonna do it for one, it has to be for all, right? Because if the schools that can afford it, do it, buy the PTO raising the money, and then you redistrict my kid to another school, I'm gonna be pissed at you, like I was earlier. So, and I think that's unfair, that's why I'm saying like.
Like, Dr. Chase was even just mentioning that, you know, it could, if the school can't afford, it could potentially then, I mean, we're talking about a, a contract relationship with PTOs, but in some cases, it actually may be principal dollars that they're using to do this for their school or something. So I, you know, I, I think there's gonna be not consistency with this as a, you know, in some schools, it's gonna be their PTA, in other schools, it's gonna be their principal, in other schools, it's gonna be a combination of the two, so it's really gonna be difficult to contract that.
Or what if you have a school that can't do it at all, because the PTA can't afford it, and the principal's like, well, I didn't afford it because I needed that money.
Exactly.
I, I don't know, like, for tutors or, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So then, so then what, so then what happens then, do we pay for that?
But has every single class. Or is it just in particular, it's a couple of.
Maybe, I mean, if it's something that's. She's saying it's.
But once, yeah, once.
Well, I thought I did.
There's a lot of stuff that benefits the kids that we're not paying for because we don't have it in our budget.
Right.
This would be a benefit, absolutely, but if it's not in our budget, I mean, it ain't in the budget. There's a lot of things that could benefit the students, we just can't do it.
But we can't shut down PTOs from supporting their school because, I mean, I.
I'm not saying that, you know, I'm just saying like, how are, how are we gonna look at it?
Yeah, I mean, I know you're not, I'm just like, you know, the very. You know, the.
The school that doesn't have the PTO to do it, and the principal chooses not to use their dollars, then what's our answer to that?
Yeah.
That's all, because if our answer is, we're gonna give it to them, then, okay, I just need to know before, you know, I make my decision.
But, so I see that from the other side, too, that, then, then why can't one school have it if they want it, and they have the dollars to do it? So I think I'm gonna look at both sides of the coin, right?
Well, I guess this is, this is what I would say, though, right? Is, is, I've had principals explain to me that they use their site funds to put projectors in their classrooms, and then the county, the, the school division decided to put them in. So they spent their school site money on that, and now other people, division are getting it for free, basically, without having to use their school site funds.
The division's doing it.
Free. There are some schools that pay for their.
And they don't get the money back as part of that initiative.
Right. Correct, correct. And so you could have the same thing happen here, where a PTO puts in, does the sunshade, and a couple more do it, and then suddenly, we as a division make the decision to put them everywhere, but we're not gonna go back and pay the PTO that did it.
Refund them, right.
Remember when we were all raising money for one-to-one technology?
Yeah.
Correct.
And we bought all those laptops.
I mean, I don't mind, I'm just saying, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
No, of course. It's not a thing tonight, it's, it's just for discussion.
Now, discussion.
It's really, I mean, there's, part of it is financial, but part of it is, there's two lanes, it's permission and then funding. Our, like, is our concern about allowing sunshades at all purely financial, or purely safety, or a hybrid? And I think that's a decision that needs to be made. Do we want to allow them to do it, if it's, you know?
All of their own.
Right, like, if we.
And are we gonna allow them to do it to our standard and not their standard?
Of course, but like, if we are just vehemently opposed to all sunshades of any kind, then there's no further conversation, right? But if it's, yeah, we want them to have sunshades, but we need to set the rules, then that's another conversation.
I mean, my concern is just, we do have some schools that's, that PTOs aren't able to pull in that much money. And so, um, it becomes really an, an equity issue, and, and I don't know what the, I mean, I.
Yeah, and PTO, and, but I think equity issues exist with all PTAs and PTOs in all schools, and we don't regulate or anything, those.
Yeah. Yeah. And we can't.
Yeah. That's their, their independence, so I.
But I don't want to take away their ability to do it if they can either, that's not fair either, right?
Right. That's where I'm struggling, is like, well, when we tell them we can't do something because another, because another school can't, then what are we allowing them to do? Or essentially saying, you're only allowed to spend money on what? If you can't invest in something that's tangible, they're only spending their money on events, oh, then if my school has events and your school doesn't have events, is that also an equity issue? So then why, what is the function of our PTO?
But like, we would, you know, we would go and raise money, um, and do separate fundraisers, and we're like, we're gonna raise money for music, because we knew every kid in the school's gonna get something for music. We raised it for art, we did separate fundraisers for the specials, because obviously book fair was easy for the library, but we did other ones for all the other specials in the building. So, I mean, we, it did, what a PTO is raising money about is in our business, but, you know, it's.
It is when.
But to my point though, but to your point before, like, we're about to do a county-wide redistrict, so I don't even know how that changes the dynamic at each school, or what the PTOs will look like when that happens, right?
Or buy something that a school doesn't have, is really the compromise.
No, not really, I mean, some people got technology and some people didn't.
So that would be like.
Well, absolutely, the, the, the PTO that puts up the sunshade for whatever school you're talking about, I don't even know which one, their kids might not be there.
No, I don't.
Right, so that, that to me, to my point before, which is, right, but it's a fair point, because we're looking at a county-wide redistrict in, in our, it's not in our, it's like right here, so.
And that's.
The PTO people would just not take a redistrict. Redistricting, right now.
Yeah, yeah.
So it is something that I think we should consider as well, because I could put it up somewhere, redistrict the school, and then a parent who was like, yay, I just did all this money on, you know, Anthony Burn's sunshade, and now my kid's Stafford L. Because, but that's, that's on us then, because we knew the.
But at the same time, these are like, this is not a playground, right? Like, this is something that's going up six months of the year, coming down six months of the year, for some, like, there's really not gonna be a lot of reason to have it up in, from January to March, right? Because they're not gonna be out there for that long, and even if they are, the sun is not gonna be beating down on them.
They're gonna work the sun.
It's gonna be like August to maybe November, right? And, um, and then again, maybe from March to June. So it is not as big an investment as, I know playground was an issue, basketball courts were an issue, um, kind of like those big-ticket multi-thousand dollar.
Part of the issue here, though, is if we're gonna require the commercial at a cost of thirty-one thousand each, it's gonna be probably outside the, the potential of any of our PTOs to put that much into there. Well, is the thirty-one thousand the shade piece, or is it the posts and installations?
The, the entire thing with the contract.
Okay, so some of them already have the posts, so they only need the shade. But that, that's the commercial one now, and I understand, because I was in the Fab when, when this was discussed, I understand that the, the residential, you know, are not prepared. If there is truly a safety issue with the residential, then I would say, okay, I understand. But if it's just a, you know, it's, it's not gonna last as long, or it has to be, you know, might rip or something, because that might be a little different, because I think what we're looking at here is not, it's, it's not affordable for anybody.
Well, I would say, um, that what Dominion, as an example, right, has, has suggested is not something that our team in safety and security and our playground inspections in the building code would approve.
So we probably ought to have a discussion with Dominion as to why they're suggesting these things that are not safe. I, I mean, I, I, I think that we're almost at loggerheads here, because if the Dominion's saying, okay, you can put this in, and they're, you know, and then people think, oh, it's just the schools that are being, you know, uh, difficult and, and not wanting us to have it.
I would also say, though, that I, I've seen some of these PTOs from my key signs raise thirty, forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, some can and not all of them can, I know, I know, um, we can, in my community, we can raise money.
I was gonna say, I can remember.
Not all of them.
I personally raised forty-five for a playground that my daughter governor district did the next year, so.
Also, I don't, the annual cost to maintain, we have a sunshade, right?
I wasn't upset they didn't have a playground.
At my mom's house, I don't understand how it's, and, and I mean, I, like, I need words. It's twelve hundred dollars per year per site to maintain it, um, like, what is that?
Right, so if you were to go out to Pratt Park tomorrow, you, you'd see one of their shades, and there's a system of, um, pulleys and tension that goes into stretching that shade over that. So when they have to go up and take it down, it's a system that they use to draw the shade down and then go and wrap it up and store it, and then putting it back up, there's, there's just tools, it's costs and.
Man hours.
The tools and stuff.
And man hours.
For folks to go out and, and actually.
All right, and that's the man hours and the tools, okay.
We gotta move to.
I would, I would request that we get more detailed information about these safety issues, I'm not saying I disagree with it, because I'm not an expert, but I want to be able to articulate that to a PTO person that, that doesn't understand why we're insisting on commercial versus residential.
Can we go like.
Iltrip.
Yes, yes.
But if we, you know, we show that, and, and I think, I think it probably would warrant something, finding out why Dominion is suggesting something that's not safe.
If anyone else wants to make a decision, they're gonna need PTOs.
They ought to know, at least based on our review, that it's not, that it's not safe to use this residential. Because if it, if it's not a safety issue, I would be for, you know, a pilot program, but for a very specific timeframe with a contract that would state that we would review it, and if it doesn't work out, we can require that it be removed. But, but not if it is safety.
All right.
We need to go to closed.
Mine.
This is the most, oh, no, read that one. I move that the school board convene a closed session for the following purposes. Pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, A three of the Code of Virginia to discuss and/or consider the acquisition of real property for construction of a replacement facility for Edward E. Drew Middle School, where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating, negotiating strategy of the board. Uh, pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, A seven of the Code of Virginia, to consult with legal counsel and hear briefings by staff members pertaining to probable litigation concerning a certificate of take filed on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four in the Circuit Court of the County of Stafford for the acquisition of road and various easements of tax map number forty-four dash sixty-one A for high school number six, where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the board. And pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A eight of the Code of Virginia, to consult with legal counsel employed or retained by the board regarding specific legal matters regarding a construction project that requires the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second.
Okay, I, I may have to abstain from part two, I'm not sure who that involves, when I find out who it involves, I'll leave, but I would suggest that if we could do one and three, and then do two, then I could just leave and be done.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, agreed, I thought we just.
We just voted.
Our wish is.
There's a motion to go in.
Oh, it's summer break. Get back in the group.
All right, thank you.
Closed session held on August sixth, twenty twenty-four be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of Stafford County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Seconds. Ms. Hall. Dr. Chase? Agreed. Ms. Guy?
Yes.
Ms. Halsted?
Agree.
Ms. Healy?
Agree.
Ms. Randall?
Agree.
And Ms. Segman?
Agree.
Madam Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you.
There's any business coming out of closed session?
No.
Okay.
So we continue?
So I would like to call our regular business meeting to order, if you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I really do.
Ms. Hall, could you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Dukku?
Here.
Ms. Guy? Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Odedegun?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warner is absent. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, we do not have an authorization to, for electronic participation tonight. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, um, we'll get our clickers. Please vote. Ms. Healy? There you go. That motion passes six to zero. Could I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
No, that's not that. Do we have both? Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes, uh, six to zero. Announcement of administrative personnel appointments.
Alright, first, I'd like to welcome Bradley McCabe, our next assistant principal at North Stafford High School, if you can come join us. Um, oh, please. Mr. McCabe will be the new assistant principal at North Stafford High School. Mr. McCabe has been a classroom teacher for the last ten years, most recently as an AP social studies teacher at North Stafford. He also served as the social studies department chair and on the instructional leadership team. Mr. McCabe holds a Bachelor of Arts in History and Social Sciences from Longwood University, and a Master of Education in Educational Leadership from the University of Mary Washington. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Please, uh, you know, share any remarks.
Alright, I'm very excited to step into the position and honored to be here tonight, and really excited for the next school year to begin, and, uh, to be continuing my journey at North Nation.
Do you have anybody here with you? Did you bring anybody?
I do, I do have my wife in my five-month-old.
Oh.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Also with us is Ashley Worlow, the next assistant principal at AG Wright Middle School. Ms. Worlow will join the team at AG Wright Middle School as the school's assistant principal. Ms. Worlow was a middle school teacher for eight years and a reading specialist at Rodney Thompson Middle School for two years. During her time there, she served on the superintendent's advisory committee, as the wellness ambassador, and as the teacher selection ambassador for Team Stafford. Ms. Worlow holds a bachelor's degree in business administration in middle grades education, six through eight, from Brunel University, and a master's degree in educational administration for K-12 from Eastern New Mexico University. Congrats.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited. Um, thank you to the AG Wright family for welcoming me, and I have my two out of three children here with me to support. So, thanks.
Alright, also with us is Dr. Shelley Waller, the assistant principal for Stafford Middle School. Dr. Waller will join the team at Stafford Middle School as the school's new assistant principal. Dr. Waller started her career as an elementary teacher and also served as an instructional technology resource teacher and instructional technology coach for five years. She delivered workshops on onsite support to train teachers on effective technology use in the classroom and modeled best practices through co-teaching and collaborative projects. Holds a Bachelor of Science in Biology and Sociology from the University of Mary Washington, and a Master of Education from University of Mary Washington. Also earned a Doctorate of Education in Curriculum Instruction and Leadership from Walden University. Thank you and congrats.
Thank you. I'm very excited to start my journey as an administrator here in Stafford County, um, and I'm so excited to meet my students and be a part of the Spartan Nation, so thank you.
Is that everyone tonight? Thank you very much. This evening, we have a presentation of, by our superintendent search, with an update from our consulting firm, JG Consulting.
I'm really not that tall, so I need to adjust. Uh, good evening, distinguished members of the board, Madam Chair, Acting Superintendent Fulmer, uh, student representative. Good to see everybody. Thank you for the hospitality this week. We've had a very productive couple of days, very busy, um, but yet very spirited, and good conversations that we've had with, um, administration, staff, community members. Uh, Dr. Scribner is joining me this evening, he's sitting, uh, behind me to my left, uh, but wanted to acknowledge that everybody has been very, um, supportive and engaged in these conversations. So for tonight's purpose, what I'd like to do is review the tentative timeline and seek your approval, um, as it pertains to the major milestones associated with your superintendent's search. Um, so I believe you have the tentative schedule in front of you. Um, so where we are in the process is the community engagement, um, aspect of the superintendent's search. Uh, so we've just concluded, uh, two consecutive days here in Stafford County, working with various groups, both internally and externally to solicit their input and feedback as we develop the leadership profile. And again, as a quick reminder, the leadership profile, for those that are new to the process and hearing from us for the first time, and, and the audience this evening, is intended to develop, uh, those, identify those characteristics, those traits, those qualities of your next superintendent. Uh, so it's critically important for those to be involved, to share their input, and to be, uh, very candid with us as we develop the profile for you as a board to consider and to adopt. Uh, so we look forward to continuing conversations. For those that are also new to this process, there is, um, there are online surveys available and accessible on the district's website. So if you're unfamiliar with that, there's a superintendent's search page where the surveys, uh, reside, uh, so we welcome your input and feedback there. And they are anonymous, so to protect the anonymity of those who wish to share, uh, we welcome your input, um, and invite you to participate in the surveys. Uh, so you can see before you, August, uh, the sixth, which is this week through the remainder of the month, will continue to host community engagement meetings. I've shared my personal cellphone, uh, direct emails with those who have participated in our meetings. Uh, for those listening, uh, my personal cellphone, if you, if you care to write this down, is two one four nine three four five five three seven. You're welcome to contact us directly. We'll set aside time to visit with you, and then my email is simply james@jgconsulting.us. Uh, so as we look forward to the month of September, our next, uh, major, um, milestone as it pertains to the superintendent's search, we will share the community input summary report. So that is a synopsis, an overview of everything that we've heard uh, through our time working in the engagement meetings through the month of August. We'll invite your input, your feedback. Uh, the document is roughly ten to twelve pages. We would encourage the district to upload that artifact to the district's website, so that way, in the spirit of transparency, you can see all of the collective input that has been synthesized by our team, myself, Dr. Scribner, and others who are associated with the search. We'll also present as a, um, as a, a accompanying document, the leadership profile draft. And really, that's where, as a board, you'll have an opportunity to provide us with recommendations, suggested edits. Um, but the intent is for you to approve and, and give us any final recommendations or edits that, that evening of September tenth. Because the very next day, we would like to open the application to receive candidate information, and, and, and all-inclusive, so all those artifacts that we require as a part of the process. Uh, the application period will run from September the eleventh through the October the eleventh. Candidate reviews, we will return and present all of the candidate information to you. Um, so as a reminder, each of you will receive an iPad with all of the digital artifacts uploaded for your consideration. Letters of interest, resumes, vetas, academic transcripts, any other supplemental documents that the candidates, uh, wish to provide to us, you will have access to. Uh, the other resources that you will have access to that same, during that same meeting, are the on-demand videos. So if you recall, we use a, a video component to, um, screen and vet the candidates, and it gives you an opportunity as a board to get to know the candidates, um, as, as their applicants, uh, for this position. So you'll have an opportunity to watch their videos, hear their responses, and give us input and feedback. So, uh, as you can see, that's a little bit lengthier of a meeting, anywhere from four to five hours, considering the number of applicants that we anticipate, uh, but it's a very rich and healthy, uh, dialogue that we'll have with you about the candidates and their profiles. Uh, and then, we will pivot and move into the candidate interviews. Round one traditionally, uh, consists of two consecutive days. Depending on the number of candidates, we'd like, we often recommend to avoid interview fatigue. You might have two to three interviews on one day, and then the second set of interviews on the, the very next day. Uh, but what we've recommended is, um, allotting, uh, that full week of time, just so you can begin to plan your own personal and professional schedules. We'll start to calendar some of these major events, um, during that, that week. So as you're thinking and looking ahead to the month, the, the middle part of October, I'd invite you to start thinking about what two days could we, uh, uh, conceivably host the in-person interviews, and that's for round one. And then round two, also in the month of October, what two days would you like to host your final round of interviews? And final rounds generally consist of your top two. Sometimes it's top three, but at a minimum, it's your two finalists. So I'll pause there, that's a lot to digest and to take in. Uh, would like to ask if there are any questions about just the overall format and some of the major milestones associated with the search.
Okay, uh, we can go down the row on this, because I'm sure we all have, um, some questions and comments. Um, Dr. Chase, would you like to begin?
So, um, I just wanted to note, and I think our board members have had a little bit of discussion about the public forum interviews. Um, my experience from doing searches, um, at the university level, but also going through this process twice here in Stafford. Um, the, the general recommendation is not to do public interviews, and this is because, uh, many people won't apply for the job if, um, it's gonna be publicly known that they're looking for another job. Um, it makes things very awkward for people in their existing jobs. So, um, I'm, I'm just stating that for the public, so they understand it's not because we're trying to hide anything, it's because you tend to not get the very best candidates applying if their current employer is going to find out that they're looking for another job. So, um, I'm, I'm opposed to that. Um, I also wasn't clear where we had, um, uh, a, um, background check on these candidates, and is that happening beforehand? Is that happening after the, the finals, sort of, in between the final selection and all of that?
Yeah, great. Um, so I'll start with your first point, and, you know, we would agree unless otherwise obligated by law. In some states, which are deemed open meeting states, you are required in those particular states to host things publicly. Uh, in the state of Virginia, uh, we are not required by law to do that. So, to your point, which was articulated very well, a sitting superintendent such as, as my colleague, Dr. Scribner, who is sitting in that role, in that chair, is less likely to apply for the position, um, knowing that if his name is publicly released or for public consumption, it could jeopardize his good standing with his current employer. Um, so your talent pool diminishes rapidly should we, we make the declaration publicly like, hey, there will be public engagement in a public forum, or whatever the naming convention is we were to use. But we would tend to agree and recommend against that unless required by law. Um, so to your second point, um, the background checks, the vetting, the screening is continuous. Um, so it's ongoing. Even for those who have expressed interest in this role, which has, has been actually quite, uh, quite high, considering we don't have a formal application, we've been meeting with candidates even during our, our brief forty-eight hours here, um, discussing the opportunity. So there's authentic, genuine interest. So we're already starting to kind of, you know, read the tea leaves, if you will. Um, but the thorough background checks take place once a candidate applies. We have a third-party group that we retain as part of our, and all-encompassing within our agreement, our contract with Stafford County Public Schools, but we engage them, and they do everything from vetting academic credentials, to credit score checks, to looking at social media platforms, uh, you know, really everything and anything. And they provide and furnish to us a very robust report, letting us know what information they found, if there's anything that could potentially, what we say, embarrass you as, as the hiring entity. Uh, we bring that information to you. Um, and, and I think there's some good, um, science behind the work that we do. We're looking to speak with folks who may know the candidates, but not necessarily have listed those, uh, references on their resumes and their application packets. So it's an ongoing process for us, um, so that, that work has already begun, but as far as engaging the third party, not until people start to actually apply, will we know, um, who we need to start screening and vetting.
Jolene, did you have any questions or comments?
I, so I just want, I felt it was important, I don't have any questions specific to it, but just to echo Dr. Chase's, um, and to your point, but just so you know, it's not just Dr. Chase feeling that way, I was uncomfortable as well with the public forum, because of the same reasons, like, I don't want anyone to be, you know, too nervous to apply, because it may have a potential professional impact on them. So, so hearing that we can actually take that off the table, and off of this, is, I feel much more breathing room on that, and that was all I really had a concern. But I felt like it's important to note, it's not just one board member, I as well feel that way.
Ms. Healy, did you have any questions or concerns?
Uh, I'm glad you told us a little more about the background checks that, that are gonna be done. Are these going to be consistent for everyone? I, I know you said there's different, you know, people that are conducting them. Do they have a, a type of checklist that, that the same, you know, areas will be, we covered?
Absolutely, and it's, uh, it's a, a part of the formal agreement. So if you imagine like, any sort of legal contract or artifact documentation, they do have a checklist, and they provide to us a menu of everything that they will do, and we can provide to you that full list of what is covered in that background check.
I, I was just particularly curious about the social media part, because some people may have more, you know, interest or expertise in social media than others, and I just wanna make sure that we're getting the same, um, areas covered for, for each of the candidates. And then to, um, you know, follow up on my, my colleagues, I too would do not support the public interview, because I don't want to discourage anyone from, um, applying. And can we make that part, assuming that the board, um, you know, is, is in consensus here, make that part of the announcement that, that the board, you know, will not be conducting a, you know, public forum, because that way, there's no question if someone, you know, would not apply if that were there, that they would go ahead and apply, because we want as many potential applicants to apply that are qualified.
Absolutely. Yeah, yes, ma'am. And the, the, the standard verbiage for us in the leadership profile that you will approve, you'll see at the very top in bold, um, something along the lines, this is a confidential search, only the school board will interview the candidates. And so it's, it's in black and white, it's clear, and it, it's, it's almost redundant in terms of the amount of times. It is redundant, and the amount of times it's listed, the quantity in that, in those, uh, documents, that are found in all of the advertisements.
Ms. Randall?
I just concur with my colleagues, thank you.
Ms. Guy?
Um, I've not done a superintendent's search, so my question is the background checks, do we see those?
You do, yeah. So we're provided with, um, it's a rather robust report. It's a PDF file that is shared with us in a secured, uh, shared file kind of manner. We, we upload it and download it for you and share that with you, um, so that way you can see. But if there are any red flags, we will alert you, so that way there's no surprises. And one of our standard questions that we'll ask a candidate, is there anything that would embarrass the school board? You know, as a part of our screening and the conversations that we'll have with each candidate. candidate, is there anything we need to be aware of? Like, we don't want to be surprised or blindsided by anything and we sure, uh, we, we absolutely will not let that happen to you. You know, because we want to ensure that this individual isn't running from something, but rather running towards something. And that's what, you know, we've been preaching all week to the various groups that we've been meeting with.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Sorry, just wanted to know if um the student part that me and Jennifer had in this, was that limited to the community engagement or do we follow through with the rest of the proposed plan?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that second part.
Did we, do we follow through with the rest of the proposed plan from September tenth to October twenty-ninth? Like, are we included in the board in those bullet points or are we excluded from that for confidentiality?
Um, so as far as the uh public forums and the engagement like tonight, you will certainly be a part of it. So it's a great question because I do want to clarify that through the remainder of this month, as we're engaging other community stakeholders, both internally and externally, it's, it now is the time for everybody to participate, to provide input and feedback. So as your classmates are returning to school, you're getting to see your classmates, your friends again, please encourage them to participate, whether it be through the surveying, if they want to email us to set aside time or define time as, let's just say in a small, you know, kind of like homogenous groups, so to speak, student councils, like you talked about this afternoon with us. If there are other student bodies that wish to provide input and feedback, we welcome that. And then we'll provide ongoing updates at school board meetings um as a matter of just the professional updates and the courtesies and I would imagine you would be a part of that. Good question. I'm sorry? Oh, okay, good, 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 good. And she was fantastic, by the way, so I was. Yeah, so I know that I'm preaching to the choir, but I was thinking, I was like, that's a future intern. Yeah.
Jenny, did you have any questions as well? Has she got it covered?
They're both amazing, so I was like, man, I was thinking in my mind, I was like, the future is bright for these, these two young ladies.
Well, for myself, I am very grateful that you're here and that you're helping us um, you know, kind of facilitate this process. I concur with my colleagues on um the public forum issue, so I think we are in consensus on that, if we could strike that from this particular document and before we move forward on that.
Terrific.
That would be great, especially it is not required here. And I know that you are very available to us or to any member of the community should we think of any questions once you've stepped away. So thank you very much for being here.
Absolutely, no, it's been, it's been a lot of fun. We both, speaking for the, for the two of us, we've enjoyed our time and we look forward to returning in a couple of weeks, so um, thank you for the opportunity. And I would just again encourage you to start looking at potential cali-, you know, your, your cali-, individual calendars and where we can find common ground to have the in-person interviews. And I don't know if tonight's the, the proper setting for that. You need time to discuss and reflect, but I'll defer to the board and what you feel is the best course of action as it pertains to planning.
Sure. Ms. Healy?
I just wanted to to follow up on that. As a board, we're going to need to be thinking about the questions that we want to ask candidates because traditionally we, you know, have a set of questions that we ask, you know, every single candidate. We don't vary depending on the candidate. So that's something else that we're going to have to, you know, do before we get to the um, the interview stage. And we have in the past done the interviews at a quote undisclosed location. So, you know, people don't have to worry about coming somewhere that they're going to go, oh, they must be here for the interview because there's the board and there's somebody all dressed up.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks again for your hospitality this week. It was a true pleasure. All right, have a great start to the new school year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, good to see you.
Awards and recognitions.
Also not at a winery. Good evening, school board members and Mr. Fulmer. This evening, we'll recognize students and staff that epitomize our values of students, integrity, respect, community, opportunity, and excellence. Well, Mountain View High School DECA officers Cole Walker and Delaney Hinson, along with Mr. Williams, please join us at the podium. Cole Walker and Delaney Hinson have both received prestigious accolades in the recent DECA competition. Cole achieved a top ten certificates? Cole achieved a top ten finalist status globally for marketing communications, securing an impressive eighth place. His role-play scores also placed him in the top ninety-fifth percentile, showcasing his comprehensive understanding and application of marketing strategies. Delaney Hinson's achievements are equally impressive, earning her the top exam score in restaurant and food service management, placing her in the ninety-eighth percentile nationwide. Her exceptional performance in role-play also earned her a medal, positioning her in the top ninety-fifth percentile. Delaney is recognized as one of only two students from Virginia to achieve dual medals in exam and role-play categories, highlighting her exceptional abilities in practical and theoretical aspects of her field. We also applaud the dedication and guidance provided by their advisor, Mr. Jason Williams. Your leadership and investment in our students reflect the high-quality teachers and education programs that are a hallmark of Stafford schools. Thank you for pouring into your students. Tonight, the board celebrates the remarkable accomplishments of Cole and Delaney Hinson, Cole Walker and Delaney Hinson, no, they're not related, whose dedication and exemplary performance have brought great honor to our school district. Their success not only reflects their individual talents, but also the supportive environment provided by our educators, families, and community. And I also believe it's important to note that these two graduates returned from London to be here with us tonight. Thank you for joining us this evening. Yeah, we're gonna take a photo real quick. Yep, come together.
Okay, we have our student representatives report.
Good evening, Stafford County. So in this passing time period, um, the media team, Jennifer and I were able to create an unbiased, of course, post, um, reporting the newfound cell phone policy. We want to be able to communicate this in the most neutral way towards our students as to avoid any aggression or maybe upset behavior that students may exhibit because this. This change, of course, is something that will be, take some time to adapt to, so we just want to get that information out for all our students to take in. Um, earlier today, as mentioned early, we um had a meeting with the JG um firm, searching for a superintendent and were able to give our perspectives from our position as to what we wanted as superintendent, what we find pros and cons in Stafford County and what we think would build a better school environment. We also encourage students to also give their input and later information on how to do that will be up on our media page. We also have been driving to increase student participation in board meetings as because Stafford County runs on students, we want students to be able to come in and give their ideas and have those ideas hopefully fluctuate and be supported in the future. So that will be, um, continue to be a media campaign on our page. And lastly, we were able to, I was able to um recently work as a student panelist for the new teacher orientation over at um Stafford Middle School. And working with other students, we were able to give teachers a good idea of what we wanted to see in their classrooms, what it was like being a student in Stafford County, and just giving them overall ideas and how to foster and um and create a better environment. So that was just a great honor to be there and I was really um happy to work with the students all across the grade levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda are citizen comments. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Speakers shall identify themselves by name. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chair. Ms. Hall?
Madam Chair, we have one person signed up to speak. Her name is Avery Yu.
I do not see her. Okay. Moving on, action item eight point zero one. Appointment of school board member Dr. Elizabeth Warner to serve as the school board's liaison to the Head Start Policy Council for the term of September twenty-twenty-four through August twenty-twenty-five.
Motion to appoint Dr. Warner to serve on the Head Start Policy Council.
Second.
Any discussion? Please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. I, item eight point zero two, adoption of a budget development count, calendar for FY twenty-six. Motion to approve. Second. Budget development calendar. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your votes. This, that motion also carries six to zero. Item six point, or eight point zero three, award of a contract in the amount of forty-six million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, including bid additive number one to Howard Shockey and Sons for the construction of elementary, elementary school number eighteen using budgeted funds.
Motion to approve the contract?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Yes, I would like to just make sure the public is aware at how low this bid came in relative to what we were predicting and that is phenomenal. It's about ten million dollars less than we were expecting.
Uh, Ms. Randall?
Um, I would just like to um clarify that additive one, is that the parking? Yes, okay, thank you.
So just to further explain to those who hadn't watched Fab C or the work session today, uh, the bid additive number one um will allow us to park about eighty school buses on the property that is the co-location of elementary eighteen and high school six, um, which will help get them off of our school grounds, which. And a hundred employee cars, which is also awesome. So that's all-inclusive in this price. Any other discussion? It is on sale. Please cast your votes. Motion carries six to zero. Item eight point zero four, adoption of a resolution authorizing an application to the Virginia Public School Authority to allow the county to borrow funds for school construction.
Motion to approve, but with the amendment that Dr. Warner is not present at this meeting and in the resolution it says she is, so that needs to be removed.
Second.
Sorry.
Any discussion on this item? Please cast your votes. Motion carries six to zero. Mr. Fulmer, your very first superintendent's report and comments, isn't it?
Yes, thank you, and uh I, I would normally keep it brief and I will try to keep it as brief as possible with it being the first one and the school year starting, just a few announcements to make. So um first, as you all are aware, that for our staff, the school year is already in full swing, um, all staff reporting back yesterday. Uh, but want to thank you, uh, you know, for trusting me to serve as the acting superintendent for the next few months, not a responsibility I take lightly. And I appreciate all the support, not only from the school board, but the staff and community as well. As you heard, there are many options for our citizens, community, and staff to provide feedback. Um, so you can go to our website, StaffordSchools.net backslash superintendent search and all of that information's on there. And also want to um encourage folks to complete the feedback form, the survey that's on the website as well. Last week, we welcomed more than four hundred and fifty teachers to Stafford during our Prep for Success Week. This year's cohort featured many veteran um teachers new to Stafford and recent graduates excited to begin their careers uh in education with Stafford. Additionally, our current staff returned yesterday, as I mentioned, and all of uh positive reports and excited and for another inspiring school year. Take a moment to thank our Stafford community for supporting our annual Collect for Kids supply drive and total we're able to provide backpacks and supplies to students in need. This year's driving, or um, yeah, drive included at Dunkathon with a few of our principals, assistant principals, and myself. Want to thank Rappahannock Orthodontics for sponsoring the Dunk Tank. And thank you and our sponsors for the support and generosity which helped fill an incredible need for our community. If your student needs supplies, please uh reach out to your school counselor for more information. Monday, August twelfth is Transition Day, uh, great opportunity to welcome our kindergarten, sixth and ninth grade students to help them familiarize themselves with the building's new routines, try out lockers, and meet their classmates one day ahead of everyone else returning. That's right, our first instructional day is one week from today, Tuesday the thirteenth. We look forward to seeing all of our students and staff back in the classroom. For parents and guardians, we appreciate you sharing with your children, uh, with, sharing them with us for another inspirational school year. Thank you for your partnership. At any time, please reach out to your teacher or school principal if you have concerns regarding your child. To welcome our students, we invite the community to chalk the walk this Friday. We'll provide the chalk and we'll ask you to provide inspirational messages to our students. Registration is requested and available at our website and social media. We are watching the weather closely, anticipating some weather. And we will be notifying our registered participants if there should be a delay or cancellation. The North Stafford High School cross-country team is hosting a Open Five K race for all non-high school runners at Willamere Park on Saturday, August thirty-first. Will be awards for many divisions and trophies from the, for the overall male and female winners. Every participant will also receive a T-shirt, um, have great food and drink vendors, a great day of running, and family-friendly fun. We hope you come out and enjoy this event with your family. As always, as we open our doors next week, please uh provide some patience and grace for our school transportation department, um, the first two weeks of school, uh, especially. It does take time for our drivers to optimize their routines and routes, confirm the students who are getting on and off at the correct stops, and for our students to learn proper safety procedures. As a reminder, all pre-k, kindergarten, and first-grade students must have a responsible companion or adult present at their afternoon bus stop, or they will be returned to school, which will further delay um our bus transportation substantially. We ask that you please bear with us for a few weeks as we work our way through the start of the school year. Please remember to download the new transportation app and um our update to our route numbers instead of bus numbers this year. Finally, a huge shout-out to our teachers, staff, bus drivers, our fleet technicians, nutrition workers, maintenance workers, parents and students who all worked very hard to prepare um for this great school year over this past summer. Stafford families, thank you for trusting us with your children. This is going to be an incredible school, school year. We are very excited. Thank you.
Thank you, and in honor of your birthday, Ms. Halsted, you may give first comments.
You can tell me, I don't have that much to say. It's my birthday, I want to get out. No, I'm just kidding. That's it, no. So I'm just excited, we're, we're coming back. This was a long, hot summer, um, and I just want to encourage parents to remember that the cell phone ban is in place because we actually love your children and want to see them succeed and do better, um, and kind of encourage them that it, reminder that this was not an easy decision for this board to come to. And we're just asking for everyone's full cooperation on behalf of the principals and the counselors and everyone else who may be involved, um, just reminding your children of that. So I just hope everyone has um a happy and safe start to this new year and I, I am looking forward to finishing serving this year with you guys, twenty twenty-four, not twenty twenty-five. I will also thank our communications department for lending. Um, I've been volunteering at Stafford Animal Shelter since April, um, and our communications departments and some of our uh amazing kids over there, our interns, and Alyssa was there, and they took pictures of the dogs and they helped us put together, um, I mean, we were able to utilize those photos to kind of help create profiles for some of the dogs. This Saturday is Clear the Shelter Day, so if you guys are looking for that extra family member, they are in desperate need over there. Those guys are really struggling with um capacity and compassion fatigue, it's real, and they are, they are really, really struggling there. So if anybody can lend a hand, um, it's Clear the Shelter Day, even if you wanted to offer just to foster a furry friend for a little bit and get them out of there, that'd be great. But I am eternally grateful that our staff and our kids were so, they were so excited to be there and so happy to be a part of it. And um Emily has actually graciously offered to me so we can find other ways to actively engage our kids um in helping our shelter partners and our forgotten few, many actually at this point. So thank you for that, my, my humble gratitude for that one as always, and that's it.
a definite superintendent. We have a phenomenal acting superintendent, but, um, what I always see when I go meet with principals and, and, and staff is they really are the foundation of our school system. And, um, yes, the person at, at the top is important, but, um, we are in extremely good hands with the, the principals and staff at central office. And then I also wanted to, to, to note that, um, as we move forward, probably one of the most important things we do as a board is select a superintendent. And so we will be taking, um, that responsibility very seriously over the next couple of months. And that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Healy?
Yes, I just wanted to, um, to thank HR and all the people that worked on the Prep for Success Week. Uh, it is not an easy endeavor, uh, starting, well, of course, they hired the new teachers to begin with, but not just that, but, you know, all the professional development, all the, just the logistics is, is overwhelming. You figure 450 new people to Stafford County's classrooms and, you know, put a few days together to, to get that level of excitement and, um, and, and, and training as well is, is really remarkable. So we have, we have a great team. And I, I'm sorry, Ms., Mr. Fulmer and his, uh, his, his, I don't know what you call it. Was that a costume or an outfit? But, um, yeah, I, it's like, I, 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 I saw the photo, but wow. What a, what, what a patriot, Mr. Fulmer is. Red, white, and blue, stars and stripes in a suit. Who would have thought? He's, he's, he's actually been, been so, so good sitting there and so calm and collected. Wait till redistricting comes around. But no, I'm, I'm, I'm very grateful for, for your stepping in, and, and I think this is a very smooth transition. I'm looking forward to a smooth start of the school year. Hopefully it won't be so hot, so we won't have problems with the, um, you know, with the commutes and, and everything else. And, and I, I have to echo your request about patience with the transportation. Um, it, it's amazing that we're able to do as much as we do. It's, of course, never enough, but, um, but things do get better. So if you have a problem, um, I, I'm sure that transportation actually will answer the phone now. They, something that in years past did not happen. Um, and if you send an email, you'll get a very thoughtful and polite response. So, um, if you have a problem, let us know, but, but please be patient and give us a little time to, to work it through. And welcome back to everybody in the school. So this is the most exciting time of the year.
Ms. Randall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also like to echo my congratulations to Mr. Fulmer as our acting superintendent. Um, he said yes to us. We got our first yes. Now we're looking for a second yes. So, um, I, I'm really grateful for the work that you've done and the communications that you've had with us and the community and putting yourself out there, even showing your kindergarten picture, your middle school awkward picture, high school picture. It was just really fun. I would also like to welcome back, uh, our new staff and our returning staff. HR, professional learning, and the comms team put a great program together for them and really appreciate all of that work, um, in prepping them for our next week, which will have our new and returning students. So it's just really super exciting. But I would also like to, as Dr. Chase was saying, talking to some of the staff, it's really fun to hear some of their personal anecdotes as well. So I'd like to not call anyone out, but I would like to congratulate some staff who got engaged this summer, birth of new grandbabies, and those that have to prepare to send their newly graduated high school children off to college. Tough, tough, but, uh, thank you for sharing that, and, and I wish all good things to the staff that have shared these things. I would also like to remind our students that when you wake up next Monday, make sure you go to bed next Monday, not Tuesday, um, so that you get a good night's sleep and you're ready for school on Tuesday. Um, and I would like for you to start by high-fiving your beautiful faces in your mirror as you get up, and please brush your teeth. Back your patience like we said for transportation. Sorry. Um, high-five your drivers as they're going to be your first faces that you see of our education system, and we would like for you to make sure you are respectful and honor and, and give them some love and attention because they're really going to be excited to meet you as well. When you walk in the school, you have an opportunity to bring in your high-five, to high-five all your friends, and your smiles to greet your friends and teachers. My daughter actually did a, uh, scientific, um, experiment and does smiling make other people smile? And so she, um, walked around several stores and would smile at strangers, and yes, it works. Smiling brings more smiles. So you can only do good things, um, and get good things back to you if you just smile. So I welcome everyone back for an exciting school year. Um, I'm sure we're going to have all kinds of twists and turns and redistrictings and new builds and groundbreaking's and a new superintendent. So it's already just on the planning part, going to be very exciting. So when you get your feet on the ground and start walking into the schools, I'm sure it's just going to get better. So, welcome aboard.
Ms. Guy?
Uh, thank you so much. Jen Alpha does not high-five, but okay. They, they give dap, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying. But anyway, um, I, I'm, I'm very happy that we have our acting superintendent. Uh, Mr. Fulmer's doing a fantastic job, but this is still the honeymoon phase. I will be apologizing soon, okay? Because you know, you know how we are. But I, I just want to welcome everybody back, all the students, the teachers, um, new staff, you know, old staff or veteran staff. Um, I just hope we have a fantastic and productive year. Um, I want to echo the patience with, um, transportation. Uh, Mr. Fulmer was going to talk to you about a lot of what I saw on social media, uh, about, you know, people talking questions about transportation. There's still a lot of questions out there, so I think we can, um, you know, just try to help people along, but to please have patience. It's not easy working in transportation, not the people who work in the office answering the phones, because I know as parents are frustrated and, you know, we're running late for work and, you know, we can be curt with them, and the bus drivers are literally transporting the most important things in our community. Well, I just called the students things, my bad. The most important people in our community, which are our children. Um, so just please give people grace. Those buses will be late because kids make mistakes, they get on the wrong bus, even older kids. I had one of my high schoolers get on the wrong bus. Um, it happens. So just give people grace. Um, also, this next week, have conversations with your kids at the dinner table or in the car about just allowing people to exist and to show up the way they are. Some people are short, tall, skinny, fat, you know, poor. They have weird clothes to you maybe, or whatever. Maybe they got blue hair. Not everything needs to be commented on, but, you know, just try to remind your children, you know, that some people have sensitive, um, personalities and just to try to be inclusive and to just accept people the way they show up. And, you know, if it, if it's not your style or your thing, you know, people can just ignore it, uh, so that all of our students can, can feel accepted and appreciated, and I just hope we have a great year.
I, um, am so excited for the beginning of school year. The, the air is thick in my house. I was almost late to today's work session because the middle school schedules released, and, uh, we had two to look up. I want to also, my big thing was going to be talk about patience, not just for transportation, uh, for counseling, for schedules, for locker combinations, for nutrition, for your teacher's time, for an email back from your child's classroom teacher, um, for things you're trying to get set up because, you know, for me, I've got four kids to take care of, but they have, you know, 100 or so at the secondary level. So it'll get there, it'll get done. I'm very excited about this year in general, um, for the new school year, for the, all the new opportunities that are opening with the lab school, with the specialty centers. Eager to hear how those first days are going, um, for all the things that are coming to our community with construction, with redistricting. These are opportunities for those of us who have been through redistrictings without new schools to go along with them. This vibe is so much better already to know that we will have seats, um, that we are filling in rooms in schools that are brand new and waiting for space to fill versus just trying to, um, what was the colloquialism? Rearranging deck chairs on a sinking ship. And to know that that's not our situation this time, um, is such a relief. And I know that it is difficult, and I know that tempers are high and feelings are high and emotions are high because we've been tied to some schools for a long time, but, you know, we're bringing in essentially three new families to our community to join the 30 or so we already have. And I'm very, very excited about that because our schools are just, you know, wonderful places for our kids to learn and grow. So thank you for everyone who is returning this year. Thank you for everyone who is joining us for the first time. I'm sorry to my kid for missing open house tonight, but I will be at middle school and even elementary school this week because I miss them. And just be great, do great, and I'm so much looking forward to this year. Thank you. Do we have any standing committee reports? I know we've just. I know, but, uh, Dr. Warner isn't here. Do you want to make a report? Governance? Okay. So we do not have standing committing reports. Um, our, we do have a work session scheduled on August 27th that will be at 5:30, and our next regular business meeting will be September 10th. Oh, and, um, please, please, please participate in the superintendent process.
I'd like to add, first meeting is acting superintendent, and we're done at 8:38, even though we started 40 minutes late, so.
Good to know. JG Consulting, add this to our list.